Meeting of the San Marcos City Council to order. Today is Tuesday, May 7th of 2024. The time is 6:01 PM. Ms. Trevino, please call the roll.
Mr. Prater, Mr. Scott.
Here.
Ms. Garza.
Here.
Mayor Houston.
Here.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Here.
Mr. Gleason.
Here.
And Mr. Mendoza.
Here.
We have a quorum present.
Okay, our invocation this evening will be given by Pastor Paul Records of the Victory Chapel. Is he here? Pastor here. Okay. Next is our pledges of allegiance to the United States and Texas.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands in our own nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
I am the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. That brings us to our citizen comment time period. Council hears citizen comments at work sessions, workshops, and regular meetings. Those who wish to speak, there is a sign up process. You may speak once during the time period and may not yield time to others. If you speak about a public hearing topic that's on tonight's agenda, I ask that you not repeat the exact same comments during the public. On the same topic. You'll have three minutes to speak when you state your name. A timer is displayed on the screen. You'll start in the green. When the timer shows only yellow, you'll have less than 20 seconds left. And when the timer is red, your time to speak is up and a bell will ring. And we have a number of people that have signed up to speak this evening. And what I need you to do is if you will go ahead and queue up when I call your name, we can process this more efficiently. I'm going to call in this order. It will be Jordan Oliver, Lori Ramos, Roseanne Youssef, Elizabeth Bishop, and Said Moshe Fakey-Gon. I'm sorry, I'm still trying to learn to pronounce that. And then I will give notice of the next ones. So, Jordan Oliver is first. And if you would, just pull the microphone up or down, however you need to, so that we can be sure and hear you.
Palestinian Christian community, the oldest Christian community in the world, is going extinct. That's not just me saying that. It comes from church leaders in occupied Palestine who reported on Easter that only around 1,000 Palestinian Christians remain. This number at the start of Israeli occupation was in the 10,000s. Seven years ago, it was 3,000. Now that number is 1,000. In an open letter to the Western Christian communities, Palestinian Christian communities came together across denominations and said this. "We come alongside fellow Christians in condemning all attacks on civilians, especially defenseless families and children. Yet we are disturbed by the silence of many community leaders and theologians when it comes to Palestinian civilians who are killed. We are also horrified by the refusal of some Western Christians to condemn the ongoing Israeli occupation of Palestine and in some instances, their justification of and support of the occupation." I bring this up for many reasons. One, because as a Christian, it disgusts me that we as a community are so willing to throw away our brothers and sisters, that we are so willing to justify violence, especially when we believe that violence is happening to people of different faith. Two, because it's easy to close your eyes and pretend that genocide is a faraway thing. Whether you see it as faraway in terms of miles or in terms of time, it's easy to turn people into numbers and statistics until there are no more people left. But this should be glaring evidence that communities and families are being wiped out. Cultures and history are being erased. If the videos and photos of the dead aren't enough, then the fact that a cultural pillar of Christianity is being wiped off the map should be. A majority of the council members identify as Christian. So I ask you to think about how if you spoke to God, how you would justify staying silent while his children of Christian, Muslim, and Jewish faith got slaughtered. Not just staying silent, I beg of you to try and explain to him why you won't even have a discussion. I ask for you to think about how if Jesus was born today, he would be born under rubble. I say this last part for everyone here. I want to make it clear that Christian Zionism is what started all of this. And Christians against Zionism are needed to end it. Isaiah 1:17, "Learn to do right; seek justice; defend the oppressed." We as a community need to learn how to follow this. It starts with bringing justice to community members like Malachi. It starts with San Marcos calling for a ceasefire. Council members, this starts with you choosing to do what is right. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Lori Ramos. Is Lori Ramos here?
Yes, that's me.
Okay.
Hi, I'm kind of new at this, so I'm going to be a little bit nervous. Okay, my name is Lori Ramos. I live in San Marcos. The reason I'm here tonight is because I understand you all have been given the opportunity to consider these resolutions regarding the situation in Gaza. I'm going to tell you a little bit about my background and why I am so invested in this subject. My heritage is Russian Jewish. All four of my grandparents came from what is now Belarus in the early 1900s. Growing up, I was one of those kids that started reading history in newspapers early. At age seven, I read the book by Eli Wiesel called Night. By age of nine, I was reading the stories in the newspapers about what was going on in Israel and Palestine. And my family was pretty unhappy with me because I was saying the Palestinians are not being treated fairly. My grandparents trying to cure me sent me to Israel for a summer working on a moshav, which is similar to kibbutz. I worked in the banana fields and the chicken houses. This was a beautiful experience. We were just south of Haifa, near the sea. But it was seriously marred when I found out that moshav Habanim was built, given to British and South African Jewish immigrants. It was built on the destroyed village of Kfar Lam, whose population had been ejected, starting before the war. So this is something that I have followed for a long, long time. I very much appreciated our elected officials. They're important, they speak up. I would expect them to speak up in dire situations involving ethnic cleansing, war crimes, and genocide. I've made these poster boards because there's so much information, so much information. It's really important that you learn, that you explore your curiosity and truly look at the history, not just what you've been fed in mainstream media or by the Zionist organizations that have managed to kind of take over what it means to be a Jew. So I ask you to please learn and consider that this is an opportunity to be on the right side of history. You guys have a chance to speak up and be one of those people that can make a difference. I guess I'm about to run out of seconds, so I do want to say, in addition, regarding law enforcement, acting in the dark without clarity will create distrust.
And your time is up.
And mistakes, and more. Thank you.
Next is Roseanne Youssef. Is Roseanne here? If not, we'll go on next to Elizabeth Bishop, online. Ms. Trevino.
I'm here. She spoke at 3:00 PM, so she's here to support, but she doesn't need to speak again.
Let's let her, if she's on, oh, I see.
Oh, that's Roseanne.
I see Roseanne Youssef is on, hold on. Let's, I went ahead with Elizabeth Bishop, so does she want? She's telling you she doesn't need to speak again. Okay. Roseanne Youssef, we had you down as in person and we didn't see you, but I see you're on now, so your three minutes will start.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, so she said my name, my name is Roseanne Youssef. I'm a Palestinian-American mental health counselor. I have no fancy speeches prepared today. I've watched my people being killed and tortured and ethnically cleansed and displaced and the worst crimes the human can imagine committed against them by Israeli occupation forces and by the Israeli apartheid state. Just to continue being told that no city in this state can pass a ceasefire resolution because it is divisive. Social justice is always going to be divisive. That's the whole point of it, is that when you stand for the truth, some people who aren't great people aren't going to like, and that doesn't matter. I've watched every crime possible committed against my people. We live in a state where the governor is greenlighting those crimes. None of you on council are watching your people being genocided the way I have been. I work as a mental health counselor. My job is to give people hope, to guide them, and I can't even guide myself through every single day because of what I've been watching. And to hear that people are afraid to introduce a resolution because of political backlash or divisiveness, when your fear is not your children being blown up into pieces before your eyes, when your fear is not watching your child starve to death, when you are not orphaned, is ridiculous and shameful. This isn't a moment where anyone gets commended for passing a ceasefire resolution. This is a moment where you do it because you're supposed to. Because if you say it has nothing to do with the city, well, it does. Because the state has a governor who's okay with it, so every city should be opposing it. Because we have a president in the country who is also completely for Israel's genocide, when every humanitarian organization in the world has condemned it, with every major judicial, the International Court of Justice, International Criminal Court, everyone has said Israel's committing war crimes. This is as clear as day and night, if not clearer. There's no excuse not to introduce and pass a ceasefire resolution, because that's the bare minimum. We should be saying, "End occupation and apartheid." So think about it next time you say your fear for your political future or for dividing the city. I fear to watch my people go extinct. It doesn't get worse than that. And that's all I have to say, and thank you.
After Said will be in this order Karen Munoz Trevino, Alan Dominguez, Menara Nasser, Zainah Abdelrahim, and Sarah Teal. So if y'all will get ready in line.
Good evening, my name is Said Moshe Varyagana. And I want to say it's such a shame that after seven months of the starting of this genocide, we are still thinking that we should talk about bringing the ceasefire resolution to the council or not. This is such a shame. Is the life of Palestinians so cheap? Where is the humanity? Why we are not standing with the oppressed people? 34,000 civilians are killed, including 25,000 women and children. Why we don't hear anything from the city council? Mayor Huxton says that the ceasefire resolution is something divisive. I want to say that indeed, it is something that unites us. Look at the people that are talking about ceasefire. They are from different religions. They are from different ethnicities. They are, we have very different backgrounds, but we are united in condemning the genocide. Why you are not, why you are not approaching, bringing the ceasefire in the chamber, in the city council? I encourage the members of city council to try to know the city of San Marcos. We are the city with diverse opinions. We are able to discuss serious issues in a civil manner. Don't underestimate us. Don't put us down. The city council has the moral duty to represent the people of San Marcos, not some specific individuals. And I want to talk directly to Shane Scott. Shane, this is such a shame that you pulled out your support for ceasefire resolution. This is shameful. You pulled out your support for resolution by just single threat. In your mind, what is wrong with supporting, stopping, killing of babies and children? What's wrong with that? Why you can't support a ceasefire? Are you loyal to the people of San Marcos or one single bully? We need an explanation from you. And we ask you to explain why you pulled out your support and you, we didn't hear anything from you. You refuse to provide us any explanation. We need an explanation. Also.
To the audience, I'm going to ask that y'all remain quiet and let the speaker speak and not be applauding, et cetera. Just let's let the speaker speak, okay? Karen Munoz Trevino is next.
I'm here today to speak to two things. Justice for Malachi Williams and his family, and justice for Palestine. There are two through lines here. Both the killing of Malachi Williams and the ongoing genocide of Palestinians are examples of state violence. In San Marcos, that looks like SMPD shooting and killing an unhoused young black man, Malachi Williams. This isn't the first instance of police brutality in our community either, as much as the mayor likes to pretend it doesn't happen here. Across the country and right up the road at UT, that state violence looks like police brutalizing and criminalizing students for daring to stand up against a genocide. And in Palestine, that looks like a decades-long illegal occupation and since October 7th has looked like the state of Israel killing, maiming, starving a people, and the full destruction of universities, hospitals, and much more. This is not at all an exhaustive list. The second through line here is the lack of transparency about that state violence. Cover-ups, conspiracies, we're left to think that these things are cover-ups or conspiracies because our police chief believes a pre-recorded YouTube video, as opposed to a press conference even, is a proper response to one of his officers, maybe two or more of his officers, shooting and killing someone in our community. In Palestine, the only way we actually know what's happening on the ground is through social media and the accounts of people that are actually there, since the US and their media only parrot state accounts of what's happening, accounts that have consistently turned out to be false. Do you guys know that police reports are actually not admissible in court? They're not admissible, they're hearsay. That's because they're only one part of the narrative. And too often, the government just moves forward, the media just moves forward with those accounts as though they're facts. As for Malachi and his family, we demand, one, the release of the officer's name and badge number. We're all in danger if we don't know who did this. Two, that the officer be removed from duty immediately. And three, that the family be allowed to view all available footage with all of their siblings and whoever they wish to be there and their family, and that an attorney be allowed to view the thing with them. Apparently, that's not being allowed. As for Palestine, I understand that this council was poised to discuss a ceasefire resolution today until council member Shane Scott withdrew his support for the item to be placed on the agenda. And I understand that Shane withdrew that support over a singular threat without naming names. I do want to say that it's so deeply shameful that one attorney in this town can be the reason why, can just hold hostage a discussion even. That Shane Scott withdrew support at the last minute, that he did so behind closed doors, that he successfully was threatened to do so also behind closed doors, is so deeply shameful. It's also frankly so deeply shameful that Mark Gleason can't even look over at the people that are speaking today. He's been the only one to not look at anybody. It's things like this, things like people trying to get this ceasefire even on the agenda for a discussion, that make people not want to engage in government at all. It's things like Mark Gleason not even giving people respect here that make people not want to engage. All we're asking for is the opportunity for a good faith discussion, and we can't even get that. And I encourage one of you, just one of you, to be the courageous person to sign on with Councilwoman Garza, to just bring forward a good faith discussion.
Ms. Trevino, your time is up.
Thanks.
I've asked, whenever you applaud, you're infringing on the next person's time to come up. I'm going to ask you again, please, please be quiet and not applaud today. Our next speaker, I have an Alan Dominguez. Is Alan Dominguez in the room or in the foyer? Okay. And I'm sorry if I'm, I know I'm mispronouncing names, but I'm trying. Menara Nasser is, okay.
Good evening. My name is Menara Nasser. I have lived in San Marcos for three years, and during those three years, I received my undergraduate degree at Texas State University, and I decided to stay to continue my graduate studies. I am also a churchgoer and a Christian, and have been raised as such, and I am also Palestinian. I stand before you to show my humanity and the humanity of Palestinians who live in this community and beyond. My parents immigrated to this country so their children could have the opportunities that they themselves were not afforded, growing up in an occupied West Bank and being forced to leave and growing up in Kuwait, a country that did not recognize them as citizens. I'm using my position as a Palestinian and as a San Marcos community member to urge city council to pass a ceasefire resolution. I have been misrepresented my entire life. People like to pretend that Palestinians don't exist in favor of maintaining the peace because they don't want to cause arguments because it's such a decisive topic. This silence perpetuates violence against Palestinians. I visited the West Bank last summer. My father started a company there in hopes of affording college students who graduate from the universities there a chance to stay in Palestine so they may have careers and raise families during underoccupation. While I visited, I met college students who were my age, and despite the occupation, despite the apartheid, they remained hopeful. And that hope inspires me, which is why I'm here today. My cousin, Leanne Nasser, lives in the West Bank, and she was arrested in the dead of night by IDF soldiers who raided her home with no warning and arrested her with no charges. This is the same police, the IDF trained the police in America, this is the same police force that trains, this is the same police training that got Malachi Williams unjustly murdered at the hands of San Marcos Police Department. The same SMPD that utilizes silence to hide its crimes, similar to how the IDF utilizes silence by killing journalists to hide a genocide. The passing of a ceasefire resolution is the first step of many to ensure a more just and equitable San Marcos. I love San Marcos, it is my home. It is my home as much as Palestine is my home, and I love Palestine. I hate the corruption and injustice that is rampant in both. I urge you to have a good faith discussion regarding a ceasefire resolution for the sake of Palestinians in this community and beyond. Thank you.
Our next speaker, is Zainah Abdelrahim present? Okay, then our next person will be Sarah Teal, but I need to read the next few. Yancy Ervalo, Mars Peterson, Tyler Mao, Anna Huntington, and Noah Brock. If y'all could get ready to speak. Ms. Teal, it's your turn.
Sarah Teal. I believe the teens in our community continue to be dramatically underserved in all areas. If you take a look at the library calendar at the quality and number of programs for middle-aged learners, it is demonstrably lacking. Most new interesting classes being added are 18+, which means that no one under 18 can attend, a situation that is against recommendations from the ALA about how to best serve young adults 12 through 17. Parks and Recreation just put out a summer calendar on Facebook, which has only two opportunities for 13-year-olds. Several all-ages programs are listed, but they are not really all-ages. No teenager that I know is going to Turtle Tuesdays or Minnie and Meatee. Outside of the lack of programming, there is no transparent way for teens or their parents to even have input into the process that determines youth-related activities now that the Youth Commission has been disbanded. For a reason indecipherable to me, that space for advocacy was completely abandoned to the Core Four partnership. The Senior Citizen Advisory Board was never disbanded, even though they are served in essentially the exact same way. The Core Four partnership that was created in 2020 is run and led by nonprofits and governmental agencies, not the community. None of the meetings that happen there are published, agendized, or recorded according to the Texas Open Meetings Act. The recent survey that was done to see what the community youths want was created by those same agencies that are currently driving youth policy. The focus group to decide what the survey was about was filled with young people who are already a part of those agencies, not a representative sampling of unaffiliated youth from the San Marcos community. The survey did not ask questions about all the goals in the youth master plan that Core Four is supposed to be working towards, but only picked out some of them, specifically ones that were mental health related. The agencies that essentially handpicked the goals to investigate, then turn around and write more grants to receive more funds to service the needs that they themselves created a survey to point out. It is such a circular conflict of interest that I don't even know where to start. Note that San Marcos mental health measures on this survey show our young people are struggling with the exact same amount of mental health issues that those nationally are. San Marcos is not some sort of teen, some sort of teen mental health crisis above and beyond other communities. Did you know that the survey actually showed that the young people in our community don't want mental health programming? But after receiving those results, the first two things that Core Four implemented were mental health programs, because that is what they are funded to do and what they can get more grant funding to do. Young people taking the survey said they wanted more community events, career planning services, and lifestyle programs. My guess is if they were given the choice, an arcade or skating rink would be really high, too. But predictably, those weren't offered on the list created by the above-mentioned agencies. This obsession with pathologizing youth is taking a heavy toll on the young people in San Marcos, who are being pushed into tons of mental health programming because that is all that is available. They are not being allowed to do anything fun, either with their own age group or with others. Some studies suggest that the lack of inclusion in the larger community and access to fun activities could be fueling the very isolation and depression that this age-siloed, adult-imposed mental health programming is trying to address.
Ms. Teal, your time is up. Next is Yancy Ervalo.
Hello, my name is Yancy Ervalo, and I am here in solidarity with Palestinians and the family of Malachi Williams and in support of a ceasefire resolution. I am here disappointed with so many of you. Shane Scott for pulling his support for bringing the ceasefire resolution for a discussion, a singular threat from a Zionist, and you come crumbling down. What are you so afraid of? Matthew Mendoza for calling me mamas and saying he doesn't believe that Palestinians are capable of governing themselves and would prefer a system of oppression over creating a power void that terrorists can take advantage of. Jane Houston for claiming that a ceasefire resolution will create division in this community. Don't you understand that there shouldn't be any division when it comes to genocide? The only stance for genocide is against it. City council is where the decisions are made. Yet Matthew Mendoza wants myself and others to believe that he has no power as a city council member. Wasn't it just last month that the city council voted to rezone and redevelop the Lindsay Street Apartments, which will end up being sold to Texas State in seven years? It is disingenuous when you say that to my face that you have no power. When it comes to the ceasefire resolution, Matthew Mendoza wants to recuse himself because he works for a company based in Israel called Nice LTD, something he's told us himself at Centro Cinco de Mayo luncheon. How much do you think he's profiting off of an Israeli surveillance technology company that specializes in phone, video, and internet monitoring tools? Nice's phone and voice monitoring technology has been used to monitor the phone calls of incarcerated people in the US. Nice Technologies powered body cameras dispatch geographic information, record management, phone, 911 communication, and radio systems of police departments across the US and other countries. Mayor Jane Houston told us in March she wasn't sure how relevant San Marcos was to the situation. How is it not relevant that Matthew Mendoza works for an Israeli surveillance company? How is it not relevant that Nice products have been used before by police departments in Austin? The pro-Palestinian movement must be a movement against the police. We know that police will not hesitate to participate in brutal violence. In Gaza, Palestinians face Israeli military, the IDF. In the US, we face a police trained by Israeli forces, of which our tax dollars have funded for years. How is that not relevant? We must recognize that these forces are the one and the same. They are all foot soldiers of the same systems of oppression. We have recently witnessed police brutality against students on encampment, for nonviolent encampments across the nation on college campuses. We saw it up the road at UT where kids were getting their heads split open by Texas DPS troopers. We have witnessed police brutality across the nation against black communities and individuals for years, and we see it here in San Marcos when Malachi Williams on April 11th was murdered by San Marcos police. We see you and demand the truth. Release the officer's name and badge number, remove the officer under investigation from duty, and allow Malachi's family to view all available footage with all siblings and an attorney present. Justice for Palestine, justice for Malachi.
I've asked you. Our next speaker is Mars Peterson. Is that person here? Here we go.
My name is Mackenzie Fay Peterson, a very Irish name for those who know it. I was born in Texas and have lived here my whole life. I've recently joined the adult world and am now participating in the wonderful experience of paying my taxes. I have questions, many, but they are not what I thought they would be when I became an adult. Where are my taxes going? Where are my taxes going? I assume to fix potholes, build schools, homeless shelters, and infrastructure. Do my elected officials care about me? I assume they at least care about my money and where it's going. Who does my president shake hands with? I would hope only those who reflect the values of the American people, we, the people. What is America? The question, the questions are never-ending, so I'll ask again. Why are my taxes funding Israel and not any of the services that Americans have been demanding for decades? Or at the very least to protect Texans from the next big freeze before Abbott and Cruz high-tail it out of here? Why do our elected officials choose their own financial gain or the pleas of their constituents? Why do Israeli officials and soldiers brag on social media about the brutality they've dispensed on Palestinians on Gaza, while our own government tells us to effectively keep calm and carry on? These questions are never-ending, but I must ask again, what is America? The land of the free? The land where my own governor forcibly restricts the free speech of Texans? The land where Black men like Malachi Williams are brutalized and murdered with no consequence? The land whose own native population is routinely abused, ignored, and hidden on reservations out of public eye, so much like Gaza? Israel does not and never has represented the needs of American people. It exists solely as a puppet state implanted in a land where the Western world has been jealous of for hundreds of years. Where are my taxes going? That is all.
Our next speaker is Tyler Mauer, and I believe Tyler is online.
Yes, I am. Can you hear me clearly?
Yes, we can.
Members of the city council, my name is Tyler Mauer, and I have a lot to cover, so I'll talk quickly and briefly. First, I must get out of the way that I am currently only a student at Texas State and not a longtime citizen of San Marcos, and thus you have no real responsibility to represent me or my concerns. However, I do feel that I am not the only one with these concerns, and the solution I present here is likely to have some support from citizens of the city. I think that we can all agree that less pollution in San Marcos, the better. The less pollution in San Marcos, the better. The council has done a good job in keeping control of ground pollution and preventing pollution of the river, especially with banning of single-use plastics in the river area. However, air, light, and noise pollution are still an issue, with the most fixable currently being noise pollution. The greatest offender in noise pollution is, without a doubt, cars. And while there are many options to reduce the number of cars on the road, such as more separated bike lanes, public transit options, and perhaps some car curfews downtown on certain days as some cities in New England do, right now, to better control noise pollution, the best option is to remove the outliers, the absolute loudest cars that ruin the environment of everyone around the city. I'm not just here to complain, though, or base my recommendations off of feelings. Rather, I've set up a decibel reader in my apartment to measure the volume of these quote "bro-dozers." For reference, my apartment window is about 100 feet from the road, and the decibel meter registered the volume of these engines as ninety to ninety-five decibels. That is the same volume level as a 737 at 6,000 feet above, and is above the OSHA threshold for requiring hearing protection in long exposure. The volume of these cars is absurd and unnecessary, but as I said, I'm not just here to complain. I offer a solution. First, the San Marcos police should work to better enforce City Code Subpart A, Chapter 34, Article 3, Division 3, Section 34.087, which covers noise limits for music from cars. I believe that this section should be amended to also cover the noise produced by the engines of the vehicles, with the limit placed at ninety decibels within fifteen feet when revved in neutral, which would only affect the absolute worst offenders. There are free apps on iOS and Android that offer the ability to read the volume levels for the police to easily read the levels. The places most affected are long, straight roads with no obstacles like Aquarina Springs Drive, Thorpe Lane, Hopkins Street, and Wonder World Drive, as well as the highway. I do hope you take these concerns and the offered solution into consideration, as I am losing significant sleep from these quote "bro-dozers" revving as late as 1:00 a.m. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Anna Huntington.
Hi, I'm a resident here at San Marcos. I ask that the city council demand a ceasefire and end genocide in Gaza. I assume that many of you are against white supremacy. However, if you are silent against violence, then how will you stand up to violence in the future? Currently, the murder of Malachi Williams juxtaposes the fact that the county courthouse doesn't even mention slavery in their Camino Real exhibit, which is...
Oh, nice!
I'm sorry. Y'all love to cite that the Clovis people, who cannot, no longer speak for themselves, are in the, are on the city website, yet you give no real voice or decision-making to the Kowee Tekkans who live here currently. You, y'all even erase them from the San Marcos' history section of your website, who have been here since pre-colonization. Stop erasing San Marcos' past violence, and don't let Palestine be erased, too. Thank you.
And our next speaker will be Noah Brock, but after him will be Annie Donovan, Jordan Moses, Virginia Parker, Daniel Gomez-Gomez, and Kishra Khan.
Good evening, city council. My name's Noah Brock, and I'm here to talk about the Franklin Mountain San Marcos' request to annex part of their property for a future right-of-way. This is a road they want to call Energy Parkway, since Axis Parkway was already taken. I'm here today because the first reading was originally posted to take place today, and just so you're aware, when you click on the AN24-03 link to get to the files on the website, it lists both May 21st and June 4th as first readings. Maybe somebody can fix or clarify that? Anyway, through submitting public records requests, it has become clear that the developer does not want to annex their property at this time. So why are they requesting to annex the right-of-way? It became apparent that it was going to be much more difficult to build in Caldwell County. Caldwell County does not allow parts of a project to be planned out through the development process. They require all plans upfront, unlike the city of San Marcos. This means that the developer would need to create a subdivision plan, watershed protection plan, phase development plan, traffic impact analysis, et cetera, before Caldwell County will even start processing their application. These are the same things that the community has been requesting since this whole thing started. We also learned that Franklin Mountain San Marcos successfully shifted the roadway alignment on the other side of FM 1984 off of their property and up against existing residences. This seems to go against their promise of putting buffers between their project and residences, or maybe a four-lane road that's 120 feet wide, just like Hopkins out here, is considered a good enough buffer. Since the next segment of the roadway is now not on their property, are they trying to expand the project by then buying that property? This roadway doesn't even line up with the map on their own website anymore. So I ask you, council members, what benefit does this annexation provide to the city and its residents? It can't be taxes, since a roadway doesn't pay taxes. It can't be improved traffic, since this is a feeder rotor for the developer's project. It seems as if it's simply to make it easier for the developer to develop it, because they don't want to annex anything else or do any work upfront. The same developer decided to remove their annexation request for all of their property after six months of hard work that the city staff put in, and you as well, and us as Without any explanation. Nobody's ever explained why they did that. They chose to keep their property outside of city limits, so let them build outside of city limits. This is an easy vote no. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Annie Donovan.
Hello, council. My name's Annie Donovan, and I'm here because Scarborough Lane Development, aka Franklin Mountain San Marcos LP, the developer for the Smart Terminal, aka Axis Logistics Park, has put in a request to annex plus or minus seven and a half acres of land for a future right-of-way, or road, to put in layman's terms. Today was supposed to be the first reading of that request, AN-24-03, but it was pushed back to the May 21st council meeting. Not sure if you guys have been briefed by city staff yet, but I digress. We are facing a situation with a developer who doesn't give a hoot about the citizens of San Marcos, nor directly adjacent neighbors in Reedville, Maxwell, and Martindale. After successfully moving the right-of-way in Caldwell County directly next to a cluster of homes on a land they don't own, Scarborough Lane, aka Franklin Mountain, is asking all of you to give them a break. They're asking you to make it easier for them to build, because they're having a hard time in Caldwell County. Caldwell County requires them to essentially have their entire plans laid out to build, but the city of San Marcos doesn't. They're requesting to annex a small amount of land so that they don't have to do the work that the community has been requesting for over a year. They don't want to put in the effort to map everything out ahead of time, they want to cut corners and build as cheaply as they can, they don't want to do the work, and they don't care about you, me, our neighbors, or the community of San Marcos. The developer made it clear that they aren't interested in annexing their land when they withdrew their annexation request last June. They wasted six months of everyone's time by putting up a dog and pony show with smoke and mirrors only to withdraw. They didn't have a plan then, and they don't want to put together a plan now. The community doesn't see any benefit for the city in annexing the seven-ish acres. It won't bring any tax dollars, and if anything, will reduce the number of taxes the developer will pay to the city. Caldwell CAD shows that in 2023, the developer paid $1,009.19 in taxes to the city of San Marcos for 735 plus-minus acres of land that are in city limits. This is land valued somewhere close to $13,301,660. But because of the ag exemption, you only get a little over $1,000 in taxes. A road will not be taxed, so the six or so acres, plus the acreage that's already annexed and will be turned into a road, will essentially remove taxes paid to the city. And at what cost to the taxpayers? Do we know who's responsible for maintenance once it's built? The taxpayers? Don't give them a break. I hope you ask yourselves, what has Scarborough Lane, Franklin Mountain LP done for the community and neighbors of San Marcos, other than waste our time? Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jordan Moses.
Hello, my name is Jordan Moses. Good evening, everyone. Glad to be here today. Growing up, I dreamed of working for the police, solving crimes, keeping people safe. What could be more noble than that? One of my heroes was St. Paul Police Chief Bill Finney. I used to see him at the old car shows. He'd put me on the back of his motorcycle, show me a slick uniform, and I wanted to grow up and be just like him. But as I grew up, the cops started interacting with me in my daily life, kicking me off a public playground when I was 12, because I was too old, chasing me and my friends while we were playing tag in their squat car, assaulting me at age 15 for swearing while calling out an unjust arrest of a fellow student. Police changed the dream that I had for myself. Fortunately, I get to make new dreams, but some don't. Why do I share this? I share it because my story isn't unique. It's part of a cycle of violence perpetuated by police across this country throughout history. How the police are responding to killing yet another community member is textbook policing. They hide behind policy and law to avoid doing what is right. They defer justice in favor of order. They reject peace to prioritize control. They continue to do what they've done for generations, which is victimize the communities they claim to serve. The training doesn't stop their violence. Diversity doesn't stop their violence. More funding doesn't stop their violence. Look, I've been an abolitionist for nearly 20 years, and to this day, the best case against the existence of police is police themselves. As long as they continue business as usual, they will only convince more and more people that their presence in a community brings more harm than good. But maybe I'm wrong. Maybe. Maybe SMPD is different from every other police department in the country. Maybe they won't hide behind statutes and ordinances and policies. Maybe they will step up and do what is right, here and now. Honor the demand of Malachi's family and members of this community, all of the demands. Release the officer's name and badge number, remove the officer's under investigation from duty, allow the entire family to review the footage with an attorney present. If SMPD and the city of San Marcos can't honor the family's demands, then at least call it what it is. The dehumanization of a young man who deserves love and support, and the denial of justice to a family in this community.
And your time is up. Our next speaker is Virginia Parker.
Hello, mayor and council members. I'm Virginia Parker with the San Marcos River Foundation. I came here to tell you I'm very disappointed that council adopted the new method for drought triggers two weeks ago to include all the water resources that we have available to us. Just because we have water to use or buy from sources outside of the Edwards Aquifer does not mean that we should be less conservative with when we trigger the different stages. Item number two on your agenda tonight would approve the sale of water to Kyle again. How would you feel if they were not being at least as conservative with their drought restrictions as we were being? My guess is that you wouldn't like it, because the agreement from last year is that you'd sell them water if they at least matched our drought restrictions. And now, you've gone and relaxed when our drought stages hit, in a time of drought, no less. For those of you up there who are concerned about equity in this town, do you know what is free for every socioeconomic class to use? The river. We have had an average rainfall year, but our river is still way below average because of how behind we are in rainfall from the past several years. I understand that we are going to use our Edwards allotment because of the rate structure. I do, I get that. That does not mean that we need to go through that water faster than we have to. Every gallon of water that we don't use from the Edwards Aquifer is one more gallon of water in our river. All this to say, if there is any way that is possible for you guys to walk back your decision on how drought restrictions are triggered, please do. The J-17 well that the EAA monitors is much more representative of our local drought situation compared to what y'all approved for city staff to track in order to trigger the different drought phases for the city of San Marcos. We need to set a good example for everyone else that depends on Edwards Aquifer, like our friends up the hill at Texas State, who depend solely on Edwards water. If what I'm saying doesn't make sense, but you're concerned, please call me. My cell phone number is on our website, sanmarcosriver.org. And please, again, walk back the decision you made about how drought stages are triggered in our city that adores the San Marcos River. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Daniel Gomez-Gomez. Oh, I'm sorry. After Daniel will be Kishra Khan, followed by Amanda Rodriguez, Sol Huerta, Sloane Rucker, and Tara O'Biella. Go ahead.
Good afternoon. My name is Daniel Gomez-Gomez. I am a student, and I am a part of the Texas State Palestine Solidarity Committee. I am here demanding that a permanent ceasefire resolution be written and passed immediately, as well as standing in solidarity with the family of Malachi Williams, a young man shot and killed by San Marcos PD. The demands for SMPD are simple: a call for a release of the body cam footage displayed to the family with an attorney, a call for the release of the officers' names and badges involved, and a call for an immediate removal of the perpetrators. How can you expect your community to trust you when you slaughter one of your own and try to hide it? The police state's oppression here gets a lot from that of Israel and vice versa, because it's the same police state. Yes, it is a horrific state of affairs in which I come to you today, council members. The Palestinian people continue to be slaughtered in the streets of Gaza, and continue to be forcefully removed from piles of rubble they used to call home. To use the word slaughter is not hyperbolic. It is a sickeningly accurate telling of a history that has repeated itself time and time again in Palestine. The Bread Line massacre, the strike on foreign aid workers, the bombings of hospitals, the current invasion of Rafah, all spun by our media to be unfortunate accidents or the necessary acts of war, if they're covered in the first place. Many times, Israel has asphyxiated the Palestinian people, denying them food, water, and thus a proper existence. A humanitarian crisis does not begin to describe the loss of life that has transpired in that city. It is a systematic mass... It is a systematic massacre devoid of humanity. The death toll has now surpassed 34,000, a metric that feels more and more arbitrary with every recitation. I wish to make the point that while the horror and pain increases with every death, the threshold for action was surpassed long ago. We are long overdue a collective response to the laundry list of war crimes being committed. The question has been raised time and time again as to why San Marcos should involve itself in a conflict so geographically removed from Texas. To answer that question, I would like for the council members to consider: could Israel have committed these crimes against humanity without the US? Could Israel have gunned down hundreds, bombed thousands, without the diplomatic and financial support of a world superpower? The answer is unequivocally and without question, no. We have been instrumental in the annihilation of Palestine. I say Palestine and not Hamas because it is not only Hamas's mosques that have been leveled. I say Palestine and not Hamas because it is not Hamas's children who have been shot by sniper rifles. I say Palestine and not Hamas because it is not Hamas's culture that is being eradicated. The object of Israel's wrath has always been Palestine as an idea. We are currently funding the erasure of innocent people. While we sit here far removed from the bloodshed, our money speaks for us.
And your time is up.
Please find out.
Uh, next is Kishra Khan.
Salaam alaikum wa rahmatullahi wa barakatuh. That means peace be upon you. Hope you all are alright. Hope you had a great day. Hope you are breathing normally, drinking clean water because in Gaza, children are not. You must have heard so, so ma, so many people talking about Palestine and is still not doing anything about it? Are you still human? From appearance, you do still look like human. So let me talk to you as human being to human being. In Gaza children, men, women are fighting for their basic human rights. Don't look down. Look, look at me. Their mothers are thanking God because their kids have been killed because they can't watch their kids starved. Fathers are running to hospitals carrying their dead bodies, children dead bodies, even though they know they can't revive them, they can't call them back. They are fighting for basic, basic human rights. The last time I saw them happy was because they were getting clean water. Can you imagine it with your family? Forget about this seat you are sitting on. Forget about whatever you position have. You guys are still alive, you have heart, you have brain, you can think about as a human being. People can talk and talk. It matters if it affects you. Please make a decision what is right. I feel embarrassed that we students, we youngsters, have to teach you guys, you adults, that what is right and what is wrong. Kindly do something right. For whatever you have position. If you're sitting on that chair, you have responsibility to listen to your citizens, what they're talking about. Are these all protests not meaningful to you? Kindly think of as a human being. Salaam alaikum.
Would you state your name for the record, please? Would you state your name for the record, please? We missed that at the beginning.
My name is Kishra Khan.
Thank you very much. And for all the rest of you, if you'll state your name at the beginning of your comments. Our next speaker is Amanda Rodriguez.
Thank you for having me. Um, and because I can't clap for everybody here, there's so much power in this room and I just want to say how honored I am to share space with each of you. The last time I was here was April 3rd. I was here to speak in front of this body and just as I plead now, I pled then to pass a ceasefire resolution. At that time, the death toll in Gaza was slightly over 33,000. Forty-four percent of those killed are children, were children at that time. Since then, the death toll has risen to over 35,000 with nearly 46% of those killed being children. So to put that into perspective, because I know numbers, it can get things confusing, that would be like nearly 20% or one-fifth of children who attend our school district, wiped off the face of the earth in under 200 days. And I would like to think that I know each of you wouldn't stand for that. You would be disgusted. So what we're witnessing is completely sadistic. The last time I spoke here, I also fielded a question to council on whether or not members of this body would support a ceasefire resolution. For those who weren't here, I had Mr. Gleason respond to me so boldly, callously, and apathetically, stating that even if we were, even if we propose a resolution calling for world peace, he would not vote for it because it is not a municipal issue. Respectfully, Mr. Gleason, you are wrong on your assertion that this issue does not affect us. Let me ask you this: what do you call an individual who is contributing to or aiding in the commission of a murder? An accessory to murder? We are subsidizing this genocide at rates larger than any country. Our tax dollars contribute to some 15% of Israel's defense budget. Our weapons and technology ensure entire residential blocks can be wiped off the face of the earth in seconds. So yes, Mr. Gleason, it has everything to do with us. So despite your apathetic and callous remarks asserting otherwise, just as I am standing here today fighting for the self-determination and liberation of people across the other side of the world, is just how I would stand to fight the same for you. That is why, oh, I'm sorry, because I won't tolerate the oppression of those I agree with and I also won't tolerate it for you either. That is why today I call on this body to do everything necessary to ensure this item gets put, placed back on the agenda as it was promised. Lastly, just as I don't want my tax dollars funding genocide and terror internationally, I also don't want to fund it locally. And right now, this city is giving me no choice but to fund terror perpetuated by this police department as it murdered Malachi Williams. From the bottom of my heart, I am so sorry for what this department has done to you. And I join the rest of the calls for the body camera footage, to release the officer's name, and to allow all available footage. And for those who may be watching that are also sending me threats, Shane, I'm not going to stop.
Our next speaker is Sol, Sol Huerta, who I believe is online. There we go. Go ahead.
My name is Sol Huerta. I've been a proud San Martian since 2020. As a disabled Mexican-American writer and educator, I immediately found myself at home here in what I once considered to be a very inclusive city. I'm addressing city council today to discuss justice for everyone, particularly our Palestinian and Black community members. Since October 7th, over 34,000 Palestinians in Gaza have been murdered by Israeli forces, not to mention those trapped under the rubble right now as I speak. Many, many more have been displaced and murdered in the time since 1948, as this current genocide is only the most recent iteration of Israel's violence on the Palestinian people. I've been in community with many Texans who oppose this ongoing genocide in the last seven months and was relieved to hear that our own city council was going to meet the bare minimum as one of the only Texan cities to even add a ceasefire resolution to the agenda. Knowing that this city council chose to remove this agenda item is honestly disgraceful and shameful, especially in the wake of peaceful protesters all across our nation being targeted by police and violent counter protesters in a direct and clear violation of their First Amendment rights. This is an insult to all the hard work and resilience of the San Marcos community members fighting for justice nonstop. At the very least, you owe it to your constituents to at least vote on this resolution, at least hear us out. You owe us transparency. Why was support revoked? Why shouldn't we all support an end to Israel's constant bloodshed and bombardment of Palestine when the International Court of Justice has already deemed it genocide? I want San Marcos to be safe for our Palestinian and Black community members. Did you know that many police departments directly partner in America with the Israeli military? The same tactics used to police harass and brutalize and kill Palestinians in Palestine are used on Black Americans, migrant children on our own Texas border, and students at our universities, including Texas State students during peaceful Black Lives Matter protests. That said, less than a month ago, San Marcos police shot and murdered Malachi Williams, a young Black man in our community. And in solidarity with Malachi's family, I want to echo those asks that the city of San Marcos releases the officer's name and badge number, removes him, all the officers under investigation from duty, and allows the family to view all available footage with an attorney present. Yesterday's ceasefire could have saved today's victims. As we speak, more people are dying of starvation and sickness. I am incredibly disappointed in the actions of city council in regards to this, or rather lack of action. But council members, it's not too late to be on the right side of history on this, to be on the side of the people, to be on the side of love and liberation for Palestinians, Black Americans, Jewish folks, Muslims, Christians, Latinos, everyone. I truly believe Palestine will be free and I hope you find it somewhere in your hearts to stand up for what's right because history and your constituents are watching.
Our next speaker is Sloane Rucker.
Hello, my name is Sloane Rucker and I'm from Houston where the city council largely disregards the wants of its constituents. Coming to San Marcos, I told myself that maybe in a smaller city, it would be different and to set aside my personal beliefs and join the cause to advocate for a ceasefire resolution. I attended my first council meeting where I listened to you all tirelessly disagree over the alignment of text on a city sign. I've spoken several times now and I've worked with others for the past several months on a ceasefire resolution that not only reflects our passion, but has also been thoughtfully presented and fact-checked. Imagine my disappointment when I hear that due to a single councilman dropping his vote, this resolution is no longer on the agenda to consider our plea for justice. It hurts my heart that y'all would sooner spend more time debating whether our city's sign should have a bird on it than even consider a resolution to protect the lives of so many. I've seen UT students get brutalized by the police and Texas State students fiercely protest, not knowing what the outcome may be. So many fearless community members are begging for you all to hear a resolution and it's such a shame that you refuse to do so. I'm asking you that you all set aside your preconceived notions and just hear us out. Two-thirds of US voters support a ceasefire resolution. We're not just some fringe group that you all can ignore. I would also like to advocate on behalf of the family of Malachi Williams, a young man that was murdered by SMPD. The family deserves the body, to see the body cam footage and every day that you let the police department hold it, more questions are being asked and eyebrows being raised. I demand you release the name of the officer who killed Malachi and I do believe he should be removed from the force immediately. My want for justice in Palestine and for Malachi are two separate issues, however, these issues are undeniably connected. Joint US-Israeli police training programs serve to share insight into Israeli policing methods and intelligence from the IDF. Both agencies have been accused of human rights violations and I'm against excessive force and state violence, whether it's at home or abroad. So in sum, I'm asking for two very simple things. We need just one of you to be brave, step up, and sign onto the ceasefire resolution so it can get on the agenda. Secondly, I demand justice for Malachi Williams and his family through the aforementioned demands. You can't undo that immense hurt and trauma, but you can at least give the family answers. You are all sending the message that you are not on the side of justice and you still have the chance to fix that. A lot of young, passionate voters aren't here today because they have no faith in this current group of elected officials to do the right thing. I'd hate for you all to prove them right. Thank you, all eyes on Rafa and justice for Malachi.
After our next speaker, who is Tara O'Biella, will be Maxfield Baker, who's online, Al Cross, Jared Chumse, Thomas Doyle, and Rhoda Adewemi, who is online. So if y'all could get ready.
Thank you. I am Tara O'Biella. I noticed you got my Polish last name right as opposed to some of these other community members. I find that interesting. Anyway, I'm here today to show my support for the Malachi Williams family and to express that there's only one simple, or several simple solutions: release the tape. I think it's fairly obvious to everybody in this room that accountability comes from transparency. That's why these meetings are public, that we can show up here and look and see government happen. And we only ask the same for our police force. Very simple demand, also in the same vein of transparency, that we know who exactly it was that enacted this violence in our community. It's a very clear and simple demand that we should at least know who has spilled blood at the place where we all have to get our groceries, not even a block, barely, from this city council chambers that we're standing in right now. And lastly, to allow the family the simple dignity of seeing the, the murder of their child. It is only the, the most basic dignity that if you say that their child did something such as this, that you should be able to prove it. It's a very simple, human demand. I think anybody with any amount of family should be able to understand that. Secondly, the status quo today in this town is genocide. I think that y'all all see this as something that's far off. That's not the case. LBJ was a genocider. He committed war crimes in Cambodia and Laos, the same war crimes that are being committed today in Gaza. And we built a statue to him on Texas State. We name our student whatever after them and as far as this town is concerned, we have a road named after him. We have a museum for him. We talk constantly about his legacy. Also, this is Hayes County, Hayes, who was a Texas Ranger whose entire existence was the genocide of native Texans and of Tejanos, who committed war crimes in the Mexican-American War. And what do we do? We build another statue of him. Not only do we build a statue, I noticed today it was recently power washed. Apparently, we still love this man. We love the legacy that he leaves behind, the genocide that he enacted here, right here. The genocide that LBJ went on to commit from here. And the genocider, right now in chief, Joe Biden wants to come here to have his little photo op, his little debate. I think it's only fair that this community, which has supported genocide, that still supports genocide, should speak out against it. That seems very local to me. That is entirely a local issue. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Maxfield Baker, who joins us online.
Hello. As a former city council member myself, I know exactly how tough it is to make these kind of decisions. I was reminded, uh, listening to all the speakers tonight, that, um, due to violence against our Jewish community members back in November of 2021, the mayor, Mayor Jane Houston, brought forward a resolution to re-sign the mayor's compact against hate, extremism, and bigotry. They were very quick to bring that forward. Uh, they brought it forward by themselves because mayors have the ability, unlike city council members, to agendize something on their own. Every year around MLK Day, we hear city council members and our police chief use the quote of Martin Luther King, that "a riot is the voice of the unheard." For those of you that don't think it's important to have our community members heard, that, that is the option that you're leaving folks with if you continue to not listen to community members' calls to do something. The mayor's compact against hate outlines very explicitly, uh, that mayors have a very important job to stand up to extremism and that it is important for communities of all sizes to do everything they can to fight against extremism and hate. It's not lost on me when the mayor is asking us to silence our claps and our support for these issues, that that is only a veiled threat of violence against those who are there to speak up today. The threat being that if you do not agree and, and stay quiet, that you will be removed by police force. Some elected officials, um, and, uh, other community members believe that, um, the violence being perpetrated against Palestinians is some biblical, uh, God, I get so lost when it comes to talking about these issues, is some biblical call towards the end times. And we as community members are afraid that that is why some of you up there are not speaking out against this or willing to act in the first place. Prove us wrong. We know it's important to get up there and say something. You all have the power to do that. Do everything you can now to avoid a riot. Listen to our community members. The most divisive thing you can do is plant a stick in the ground and draw a line and say, "we won't talk about this issue." It's more than disheartening to know exactly what it takes to sit up there and not see anybody here reflect the values, aside from Councilmember Garza, of what our community is asking for. I hope that there is no violence. I hope that we can find a peaceful resolution and pass a ceasefire and move forward, but it is going to take courage from at least one other person. courage from at least one other person, or simply the mayor themselves. Remember, Mayor, you brought forward that mayor's compact against hate. You have every power to do it yourself right now.
Our next speaker is Al Cross.
Good evening, council members. My name is Al Cross. Good evening, Jude, Shane, Alyssa, Jane, Sol, Mark, and Matthew. My name is Al Cross. I hold a heavy heart and a heart full of love and rage while I speak to you today, and so much joy to be surrounded by so many people fighting. I'm really proud to be standing with you all today. I'm also honored to stand in the reverberance of love and just this powerful love from Malachi's family, as we come together to ask you to participate in the pursuit of justice for this tragedy. Malachi lived about a six-minute walk away from my house for the last few months of his life. I live in the same neighborhood as you, Matthew. Malachi used to visit the gas station on the corner and got a lot of help from community members who saw him as human. Meanwhile, you call the cops on homeless people, Matthew. Malachi stayed about five-minute walk away from this place, the place where you come together and make decisions that impact people's lives. He was our neighbor, your constituent, and our community member. Malachi's life shined a light on many people's lives. It has shone a light on mine, even though I never got a chance to meet him. Malachi was involved in fighting for other people's well-being. He was an advocate and deeply caring, like his beautiful mother raised him to be. Malachi was so, so loved. He is so, so missed. There is nothing that you or I can do to bring this sweet soul back. But as our selected leaders of this community, you can step into bravery and love, and you can help write a more just end to this story. Allow me to warmly invite you into an opportunity to serve the people, your constituents, and prove to them that you do not see their lives as expendable. So first, I ask that you facilitate the three demands of the family. Make sure that the body cam footage is released on their terms, and that the name of the officer be released and that he be removed from duty. And second, I ask that you help bring forward robust mental health resources to the city and county, where police officers are not the ones responding to people in crisis. Malachi deserved to have compassionate people who saw his humanity intervene and de-escalate. Instead, he was met with cowards who shot a 130-pound boy in the back. Rest in peace, Malachi Williams. May your light continue to shine through our words and actions. And free Palestine. Vote for the resolution.
Our next speaker is Jared Chumse.
Good evening, council. I'm back. My name is Jared Chumse. I'm speaking to you two this evening to speak on purpose-built student housing and also affordable housing here in the city. I'd like to make the record clear that I am here, and the developer, who was trying to push for the Lindsay Street apartment, is long gone, right back to his residence up in Austin. So the fact that regular residents have to live in student housing in the first place is an indication that San Marcos really lacks affordable housing options to begin with. Regulation has to come from both the city and the university. Texas State needs to do a better job. You know, they're the ones who have allowed this problem to go on for as long as it has. So we'll be speaking with the university, and we'd like to continue conversations with you all to address this issue. Some things that the city can work on in order to prevent this predatory leasing practice from spreading is to ensure an accurate registration count for all of the purpose-built student housing complexes. Some of them, by the way, are old complexes that are conventional, that do conventional leases, and then have been converted into student housing. And I don't know if that's being picked up or counted by the city. To require lead silver construction certifications on all purpose-built student housing, like the one that you all had just passed for the Lindsay Street complex. More funding for code enforcement, and also for the Neighborhood Enhancement Department, which is apparently the one that's in charge of ensuring an accurate registration for all of these purpose-built student housing. And there's a couple of other things that other cities are doing to protect their residents and to ensure affordability for the community, some of which include a right to cure, the right for tenants to resolve late payments before an eviction hearing, permanently stains their record. Right? You all were just kind of briefed on some local research done by Texas State, and also I think Hayes County, or Hayes Coalition on Homelessness. The real solution to homelessness is affordable housing. So unless a city can really step up and ensure incentives for more affordable housing created in the city, we're going to continue to see homelessness double and even potentially triple, with the cost of living going up so high in this area. You can also institute an ordinance that's right to counsel, right to tenants, to public defender, or an ordinance called Just Cause Evictions, ensuring that the landlord actually provides a reason for evicting their tenant that is legal. There's also something called No Net Loss Housing, which means that for every affordable housing unit demolished, a new unit must be constructed in the city. This is something that other cities, like Los Angeles, who is currently dealing with the housing crisis, have already passed, and it's been doing great things for that city. So the role of the city is to use public policy and public resources to balance growth and prevent displacement. This ensures everyone's right to stable and affordable housing. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Thomas Doyle.
Good evening. I'm Thomas Doyle. I'm on faculty at Texas State University in the Department of Political Science. I specialize in international politics. And so many of the speakers here tonight have discussed the resolution that presumably was before you on ceasefire in Palestine. I don't want to rerun the same points that have been made tonight so far. I want to come at it from a slightly different angle. Why is it in the political interest of the city council to take up this resolution to begin with? Certainly, it's not a municipal issue in the strict sense of the term, but it is a municipal issue considering how globalized our world is, with both upward connections from the local to the international and reverse connection from the international to the local. It's really difficult to think that we can disentangle ourselves from foreign policy. So to the extent that it's in the municipal interest of the city council to have a position on something that bears upon the lives of many of our own residents, I'd say that's the first of the political interests in the city council in considering the resolution. But second, it just seems to be that there is no military solution to the issue. There's got to be a diplomatic solution. And one way that a diplomatic solution can start is a bottom-up expression of the city council as a lobby group to our congressional representatives, saying that "we believe that there's a political solution." It has to be diplomatic. It has to result in a ceasefire. A ceasefire is a necessary precondition for the release of American hostages. A ceasefire is a necessary condition for the release of any other hostages and for a cooling down, especially in a region that is a nuclear flashpoint. So I would urge the city council to reconsider. Maybe you've got what you think are convincing reasons to not bring it up. I think there are convincing reasons to the opposite. I think those reasons are overriding. Thank you very much.
After our next speaker, who is Rhoda Adewemi, who's online, will be Shelley Akri, Emily Spivey, Wayne Miller, and Shay W., and Shanta Major. So now we are to Rhoda Adewemi online. Go ahead.
Hello, can you guys hear?
We can. If you'll state your name, and then you've got three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Rhoda. Okay, thank you. Good evening. My name is Rhoda Adewemi, and I believe the way that UT Austin and Texas Police Department has responded to students exercising their right to free speech and practicing what these brilliant minds have been taught to do in the face of injustice is extremely appalling. However, I never expected to find this injustice and prejudice and brutality, even within our own San Marcos community. On April 11th, SMPD shot a young black man, Malachi Williams, here in this beautiful city, not even 10 minutes away from my place of residence. And unfortunately, the family has not even been given the courtesy of a complete and full story. And on May 6th, as of May 6th, Israel has been launching nonstop attacks in eastern Rafa, bombing homes and slaughtering many civilians. These attacks displacing 100,000 people and adding to the 1.5 million people that have already been repeatedly... These days, the infringement of justice and police brutality and genocide are unfortunately an unending echoing part of daily life, especially for people like me, young, black, Muslim women and students that are on this campus, and many others who are unequivocally in the support of Palestine and in support of Malachi and family. The people of Palestine are not only by brothers and sisters in faith, but merely in the fact that we are all human. So they are also your brothers and sisters. In short, I urge you to not only put a ceasefire on the agenda, but also to unquestionably pass it. And as for Malachi, release the name of the name and badge number of the officer, and the body cam footage and all other available evidence to the family with an attorney present. And we ask that that officer, once recognized and identified, be removed from duty. Honestly, you members of the court, you all are so lucky that you can maybe leave this at work, leave this at home, or not take this back to your families. But for some of us, that is not even a fathomable part of our day. For some of us, this is walking, talking, and sleeping with us. And this is something that we cannot simply get over or brush aside, or continue to hear about and continue to leave. I end with this. San Marcos is a very welcoming and diverse place. I just recently moved here to complete my studies, and I enjoy it, and I love it here. And I never expected to find any sort of situations like this on our campus, and I expected that we would be, I expected that San Marcos would be one of the cities that was unequivocally standing for justice and peace and the non-violence or brutally, murderily of not only our own community members, but people overseas. Despite this being foreign affairs, this is something that definitely affects us as citizens, our right to free speech, and our right to just be ourselves and express ourselves within the safety and bounds of the United States Constitution. I only ask for justice for Malachi and his family and a free Palestine. And I urge that you put not only this ceasefire resolution on the ballot, but you pass it with all the faith and dignity in your hearts to be upstanding citizens of the court. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Shelley Akri.
Hi, my name is Shelley Akri, and I'm a resident of San Marcos, Texas. I'm here tonight for the third time. I don't really want to be here. I'm really exhausted. I've worked 12 hours today, but I feel like my voice isn't being heard. So I'm here to speak again and ask for a ceasefire resolution to be presented in this chamber. Currently, the citizens in Rafa, which are the southern part of Gaza, are being bombed, yet again, forcefully displaced, and who knows if they'll actually make it. The areas that they're being forced to relocate to are not habitable. Morally, there is no justification for the killing of children, and yet there are no consequences, apparently. Morally, there is no justification for the killing of medical personnel, and yet there are no consequences, apparently. I'm just asking you guys to speak about this. I know that this was originally on the agenda to be spoken about, and I heard that it got removed recently. I don't know the details on that, but that's incredibly upsetting to hear that it got pulled. And this goes to everyone except for Ms. Garza. I need you guys to find some courage. I don't know why some of you feel like you can't speak, but please, try and find that courage before this becomes even more of a political calamity, before it becomes even more of a humanitarian disaster. I've said before that I don't feel supported by my state, especially for the fact that because I don't support this genocide, I can't even contract with the state of Texas as a medical professional. Now, I don't feel supported by my state, but I hope that I can feel supported by my community. Additionally, I would like to also say that I'm very much in support with the family of Malachi Williams and for their reasonable and what I feel like are very simple demands, which are to release the officer's name and badge number, to remove the officers under investigation from duty, and also to allow the family to view the available footage in whatever way necessary that they feel is best. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Emily Spivey. Is Emily Spivey here? Wayne Miller will be next.
Good evening. My name is Wayne Miller. I want to take a little bit of liberty. I want to step out from my hiding, and I want to show you this. I want to humanize my grandson. My grandson is Malachi. I call him Peanut. Any of your grandparents are any of your grandparents. This could be your grandchild. You see, this right here is Malachi, G-Daddy, and G-Money. That's who he called us. That's who he was to us. You see, I want to humanize my grandson. He was a sweet child.
Sir, would you go back to the...
He was a sweet child. He was a sweet young man. But some of you will never meet him, because he's gone. I'm not doing this for dramatic purposes. I want to touch the hearts of each and every one of you. I want you to know that my grandson could be your grandson. Some night, somebody's angry, somebody's upset, and they act out on their emotions. What would you want to know? What would you want to see? Some of you saw that after I had finished speaking at noon, early 3 o'clock today, I walked into the lobby, and I met somebody I'd never met before. That was Chief Stanwich. When I walked in, I saw him. He was looking at me, and I asked him who he was, and he introduced himself. And he told me, "You didn't tell the truth." And I wanted to know what I didn't tell the truth about. He will tell you that he has invited my daughter and my children to come and view the body tape. But then, when I made the demands, and I asked him for what, this is what I asked him for. His administrator, Tammy, she writes me, she said, "As I promised, I am sending the answers to your questions regarding the updates related to the autopsy. Inclusion of the video footage from HEB and convenience store, and other officer body cam footage as available. I will be in touch with you as soon as I have details to share." This was sent to me on April 29th. I have not heard any updates. So you tell me, did I lie to you today, or am I an honest man? You judge that. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Shay W. Is Shay W. here?
Hi, guys. I'm going to try my best to get through this. My name is Shay.
Thank you.
On April 11th, 2024, a San Marcos police officer shot and killed my little brother, Malachi Williams. But he wasn't just mine. Do you see that picture? There's five more. As an older sibling, I'm very overprotective of my little siblings. To see them hurt hurts me and my family so much. hurts me and my family so much. Or asking for simple demands, please release the officer's name and badge number. Please remove any and all officers involved in this situation. And please allow me and my family to be able to view all and available footage. It's really not that hard. We just want answers. It's been almost a month. All we want is answers. I also want to speak to the Palestine people because I really appreciate you guys. Malachi might have been free and at peace, being where he wanted to be. But one thing for certain and two things for sure, Malachi Williams was loved. And I want to put that on the record. He was loved. I don't need the other 30 seconds. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Shanta Major.
Hi, I'm Malachi's mother. My son was absolutely amazing. Very intelligent. He started reading at two years old. He took... It's very difficult for me, guys. I just want answers. That's all that I want. And he was, uh, always helping everyone. If he was here, he'd be, he'd be standing with Palestine, I know, because he stood for B, BLM as well. And he, um, he always just wanted everyone to get along. He always just wanted everyone to be at peace. He was a very peaceful person. And I have spoken with several people about my son. He was supposed to be coming, uh, with me home, went to a new home on May the 1st. I was supposed to be coming to get him. Um, he agreed to go ahead and come on with me. Guys, this is the most hard thing I've ever had to do in my entire life. My family is very, very close, very close. We just want, I'm not going to reiterate the demands, but I want that officer off the streets because if you shoot someone in the back, this is Texas. When do we do that? That's cowardly. We're not cowards in Texas. We don't do that. San Marcos, my daughter, my oldest daughter, she went to college here. My son, he went to college here. I thought that San Marcos was safe. We had a lot of fun times at the pools and going different places. San Marcos was safe. What happened? What happened over the last five years? What happened? And I don't understand this. My son was very loved by our entire family. He was such a free spirit. And I just want to say also thank you for, for the Palestine protesters. Because one thing I want to do now is I just want to speak to everyone just in general. Like, I want to speak to these young people because my son, just don't lose your fire. Don't ever lose your fire, and don't ever back down. Don't ever let no one tell you what you can or can't do. Okay? Don't let nobody do that to you. I just want you guys to know that, um, I love my son. And he would have been here for each of you. Very caring person. He gave the shirt off his back. He literally has given the shirt off his back. I asked him one time, "Where's your shirt?" He said, "Well, someone else needed it." That was his response. My son is not a monster. He would not be created as one, or look, one. He wanted to be a banker. He liked music. Very handsome. I miss him so much. So guys, just, we're just simple requests. And I don't think anyone under investigation should be back on the streets. That doesn't even make sense. Okay? Love, peace, and joy, okay? All right?
Our next speaker. Our next five speakers will be Ashley Arroyo, Jen Williams, Kayla Miller, Maddie D., and Rodrigo Amaya. We have, Ashley would be online. I don't see that. I do see a couple of these other people we need to bring over. Hmm? Today? At, at 6 o'clock?
No, you're talking about the attendees. They just, they get that...
Uh, they're on my list to cut, they're on my list, and they're still an attendee. They're up next. Today, at 6 o'clock? Okay. No. I'm looking at my list of speakers and that are coming up, and I see them in the attendee list.
Yeah, Jen is on the phone.
Okay. Okay. All right. And I don't see Ashley Arroyo, so it looks like, uh, Jen Williams will be next. Okay. So whatever we need to do to let them speak, I don't know what it is.
Hello?
Uh, we hear someone. If you'll state your name... Yeah, we can hear you. If you'll state your name, you have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Genesis Williams. And on April 11th, San Marcos officer shot, killed, and murdered my older brother, Malachi Williams. I called in today to not only put a spot, a spotlight on what's going on in San Marcos community, but to also reiterate our family's demands. Before I say that, I would like to say that there's not much that govern, that San Marcos government officials can do to fill the hole that Malachi has left behind when y'all killed him. But the one thing that y'all can do, the one simple request we have made, y'all have lied and said that y'all have given us, y'all have sold us false hope. So today, I'm asking more, I'm demanding that you release the officer's name and badge number, remove the officers under investigation from duty, and allow all of my family available footage, to see all the available footage with an attorney present. My mother has not even been able to identify her son. Hasn't even been able to lay eyes on his body yet. We haven't even been able to put him to rest. So justice for Malachi Williams. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Kayla Miller. I don't show her as, as, but is Kayla Miller in the room? In the lobby?
No, she should, she should be...
Yeah, I'm looking, I'm looking, and I don't, I don't, I don't see. I don't see her. Well, I'll, I'll check around. Uh, I'll ask again when we finish. I'll make another round because there's somebody we missed earlier that, that I'll come back to that they weren't online. Maddie D., I believe, is online with us. If you'll unmute yourself, and you have, if you'll state your name, and, um, you have three minutes. Maddie D.? She's in the Zoom. I think at this point, all she needs to do is unmute. I think. Because we show that she's online.
Hello?
We, we have patience, sir. We have patience.
Hello?
Is this Maddie Dixon?
Yes, it is.
You are online. If you'll state your name in your voice, and you have three minutes.
Okay. Good afternoon. My name is Maddie Dixon. I'm the auntie of Malachi Williams. I have so many fond memories, and I'm still in such disbelief that something could have happened to someone who was such a quiet, reserved-type person. And it's still in my mind as to what could have possibly happened. The only way that we can know what happened is by simply having the tape released. Because once that tape is released, and the footage is shown, the truth will be told, no matter what the truth is. And secondly, I think that the name of the person that, um, committed this act should have his name released. I don't see any harm in doing that. The truth will set you free, and I think he will feel a lot better if it is a he. And also, I feel that the, um, there should be an attorney present when, um, the footage is released. These are just really simple requests. I think that it is owed to the family. We are in so much pain. But anytime that you can see the truth, then that's when healing starts. And I'm asking that you all help to make this happen. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Rodrigo Amaya, who joins us in person. Following him will be Liz Amaya, Eli Doyle, Amon Ashan, William Wilson, and Scott Cove.
Mayor, Council, Rodrigo Amaya. Last time we were here, Mayor, I was very concerned by a statement that you made towards the attorney here. When you stated, "Please stop me before I say something illegal." That really concerns me because we should have a better understanding of what can and cannot be said. As far as what's been going on here, you know, cover-ups, corruption, all of y'all, for years, I've been here since 87. This is not a new problem. 96, one of my friends died in jail. Sent his body up to Austin, did an autopsy, didn't contact the family. All this stuff is not new. It's been going on for years, okay? Mayor, you're responsible for the things that happened in this courtroom. Last time, there was a gentleman in here with a cap. That developer that y'all were catering to. Just wanted to share with you while I was outside, that individual that you were so happy because he was smiling as you were amending his request and stuff for that apartment complex. He came up to me and pushed me while I was sitting up outside. You know? Yeah, I pushed him back because I defend myself, okay? I do defend myself. I know the workings in and out of law enforcement. Did it with four different agencies. The one thing that was common in those agencies is the training. Did you know, and if you didn't, you're going to know now, that one of the problems that you have here is that your defensive tactics instructor has taken on his, a position of not asking the higher-ups if certain techniques are approved. He's just doing it on his own. It's on-the-job training, okay? That is very wrong. That is very wrong. You know, Mayor, in the past, you shared with us how you went to the Citizens Police Academy, and I've told you repeatedly, that doesn't qualify you to be an expert or give the testimony that you confidently give repeatedly about use-of-force scenarios. You're not qualified. That takes a lot of training, Mayor. Now, the other council members here, I've got some that are chewing gum. I've got one of them, you might want to think about bringing a stray jacket because they're repeatedly making all kinds of gestures. You know, some of the other ones that are not making eye contact. All of that is very, very inappropriate. It's disturbing. It's, it, it, uh, it's very distracting, and y'all need to do better. Again, Mayor, please, council members, that ceasefire they keep talking about, support it. The release of Malachi's, uh, body cam and all that. Please get some folks that know what is involved in that. This council is not. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Liz Amaya.
Good evening. My name is Liz Amaya. Um, I'll make this short. Um, I just asked, uh, that you please release the name and, and badge number of the officer, San Marcos police officer that shot and killed Malik Williams. Uh, please release the body cam footage, uh, with an attorney present and free Palestine.
Our next speaker is Eli Doyle. Or Ellie Doyle. I'm sorry. I'm not sure which.
It's Eli.
Okay.
My name is Eli Doyle, and I'm here tonight in solidarity with Palestine and the family of Malachi Williams. What is clear tonight is the ease with which this council is more comfortable with being complicit in violence than even listening to the vocalization of solidarity of the people here. Rules about not repeating previous comments result in the silencing of our common outcry against injustice, against horror, against atrocities that should have never happened in the first place. Rules about not clapping, snapping, and vocalizing from our hearts are enforced by you, Jane, not because it cuts into anyone's time, for that timer is started only once a person says their name, but because you would rather hear violent silence than our common humanity. Where is y'all's humanity? Humanity cannot be experienced alone. It is collective. We are here collectively. We are watching you. We are watching you grapple with your own humanity while you deny our own. While people are murdered, genocide committed historically and presently, countless lives stolen because people in seats like the one you sit in tonight would rather remain comfortable, scared by things that do not compare in the slightest to the violations of life that we speak to tonight and have spoken to. Release the officer's name and badge number. Remove the officer under investigation from duty. Allow the family to view all available footage with all siblings and an attorney president, present. Put the ceasefire resolution on the agenda. These actions are the absolute bare minimum to engage with your humanity and ours again.
Our next speaker is Amon Ashan. Sir, Amon Ashan. Okay.
Um, hello all. My name's Amon. Bismillah means "in the name of God." I hope y'all are doing well. Today, um, for my citizen's comment, I wanted to speak about two extremely important issues facing our, um, community at this time. Firstly, I want to demand justice for Malachi Williams and that his family receive, um, all, receive the, be able to view all footage that is available with all siblings and family present, as well as an attorney, and that the name and badge number of the officers be made clear, as well as, um, all other, um, demands that the family has made. If we wanted to be a community in which our community members feel safe, we must start now. Hold our law enforcement accountable and hold ourselves and each other to account. This injustice in the city that we, that I live, breathe, and study and work in, the city where I want to go for runs after, um, sunset, and it is unacceptable. I cannot feel safe doing any of these things in my city until and unless I know that my family and the families of those, my fellow community members are safe and that we actually hold each other to account. Secondly, I wanted to complain, as is my right in this, um, comment session, about the last minute with the drawing of support for a ceasefire resolution discussion. Let's get on the right side of history and so that we don't sit idly and stand and watch as our tax dollars fund a genocide, one in which children are trampled and blown to bits, where young children are losing their limbs and all of their family members. Children like my little brother, who's only seven years old, cannot go a single moment without hearing the constant buzzing of drones around them. Children like my little nieces and my little nephews that are forced to sleep in cloth tents in rain and mud and horrible conditions with little to no access to clean food or water. Children, children like your children, your grandchildren, and your nieces and your nephews. And so I want to conclude, and I urge you all with, from the bottom of my heart, out of love, and as a fellow member of this community, to stop injustice wherever and whenever you can. Be somebody that's worth remembering in the positions that you hold at this current moment. Be somebody that leaves a legacy of hope and justice, and don't be cowards. San Marcos and our residents don't deserve cowardly representation and leadership. Justice for Malachi Williams and ceasefire now. Thank you.
If Zainab Abdul Rahim is still online, uh, hang on, uh, I've got you down after our next two people. That's, uh, Zainab Abdul Rahim. William Wilson?
Hello there, William Wilson. Just want to point a couple of things out. Stan Standridge, the chief of police here, as was pointed out earlier, went and accused the grandfather of a recently deceased young man of lying and... disgusting, and the amount of no accessibility, no accountability from the police. And he has a history of doing this. I would encourage everyone here to look into this police chief. Came from Abilene. What is he doing? Look into it. It's not good. Secondly, also want to point out for those who don't know, less than two hours ago, Israel cut off the civilian... less than two hours ago, Israel cut off the civilian aid checkpoint into Gaza. Why, uh, into, uh, into Rafa to begin presumably the final stage of this horrific extermination campaign. And to say it doesn't affect, uh, people of San Marcos, I mean, I'm sure all of you are tired of hearing about Palestine. People have been coming in, you know? You'll be hearing about it a lot more if the IDF forces this huge amount of people. They already have homes. Why are they being forced presumably into, into Egypt? You know, Europe turned into a right-wing clown show, over six million Syrian refugees. This is not just Gaza, Israel, these are people. You will not hear the end of it. And I hope you're conscious, I, I, I hope you think about it. So yeah, thank you all.
Our next speaker is Scott Cove. Scott Cove here. There we go. I thought I saw you earlier.
Hello, everybody, hey, community, hey, city. Um, I'm coming to speak about our ceasefire resolution in the council, but I would also like to say that Malachi Williams should be living today. I don't believe he was a threat to multiple police officers in our city. And if he was a threat, it could be proven with a body cam footage, so it should be released. That's why we have body cam on our police officers. We give police officers weapons, guns, bulletproof vests, military hardware, really. And they should be held to account while we give them all that responsibility. If we allow someone to be killed by a police officer and then there is no accountability, there's, uh, just, uh, darkness covering this whole incident. It makes us feel unsafe because the police have a lot of firepower. And it's, it's scary. And I know a lot of people in our community are scared to be around the police, and their job is supposed to be making us feel safe. And I think if we release the body cam footage and we do some accountability measures, we can make people feel more safe. Um, I would also like to speak directly to our community and say there's an emergency, um, in Rafa, in Gaza. It's the southernmost city in Gaza. All the people in Gaza, they've been forced to the southernmost part. They're concentrated there. It's, it's one of the most populated places on earth with humans. It's more densely populated than New York City and Tokyo. Um, in Rafa, there's estimated 600,000 children. That means there's, it's a twenty-five mile, square mile area. That means there's estimated 24,000 children per square mile in Rafa. Uh, trapped there, living in tents, you know, from here to Walmart, that's a, that's a mile. In a square mile, there's 24,000 children. There's, you know, that many adults in that area. And yesterday, tanks from the Israeli military that were likely paid for by the United States government entered Rafa, and we don't know what's gonna happen. These children are in danger, and everyone that's a U.S. citizen, we've paid for all these weapons. We've backed this whole assault internationally, on the international stage. The United States is looking like a pariah. And this massacre is being recorded. It's the 21st century, it's gonna be on the internet for hundreds of years if we have the internet and hundreds of years. So please, everybody that's a U.S. citizen, do whatever you can. Um, everybody can do something to speak up. Thank you.
And I'm gonna go around one more time for those that were not here when I first called on them. Zainab Abdul Rahim, are you still with us?
Yes, I'm here. Yes?
Okay.
Sorry. Okay, sorry, I wasn't sure if you could hear me.
Yes, we can. If you'll state your name, you'll have three minutes.
Yes, my name is Zainab Abdul Rahim. Hello to everyone. Uh, my name is Zainab Abdul Rahim. I'm an officer of the Palestine Solidarity Committee here at Texas State and a member of the group San Markets for Palestine. And of course, I'm here to voice my solidarity for the family of Malachi Williams and to call for the justice of this life that was lost far too soon. Uh, I'm here to further counter the belief that the issue of a ceasefire resolution is one that does not apply to us or one that does not apply to the members of the city council that are here today. Uh, this issue, I would argue, is becoming almost as, uh, as much of a local one as it is an international one, especially as the systems that uphold what is going on seek to dictate how we can and cannot discuss this issue. We've already heard from several members of the community on the extent to which this issue is one of local importance when it comes to where our tax dollars are going and how our police system counterproductively operates to uphold the systems that lead to the loss of both Palestinian life and of course, the members of our community that are lost to police gun violence. Um, but I wanted to talk a little bit about the protests we had last Monday on Texas State's campus. And as an organizer of the protest, I alongside many other officers and organizers of this protest, were approached by multiple members of the community, be they Arab, Palestinian, Jewish, Muslim, et cetera. And to the extent to which they were so happy and relieved to finally be given a place where they can stand and sit in solidarity with the several hundreds of people that were there to voice their solidarity. They felt, I, I remember being told, "Thank you for finally giving us a place where we could sit here and come together and actually talk about this in a safe way." Uh, this security was entirely upheld by members of our community who have acted in a peaceful manner to say, "We say no to violence. We say no to how our country and how our community contributes to the genocide that we see happening in Gaza." But it's the unfortunate, unfortunate reality that it is members of the community that have to uphold this. Uh, similar to what, uh, Mr. Maxfield Baker said earlier, when there were issues of hate seen in the community years ago, it was an initiative of this city council that took action to, uh, to counter that. But now it is entirely one of the community with the thanks. Uh, in addition to member Alyssa Garza, who has done so much in coming out and supporting the community on this issue. But it shouldn't just be, um, Ms. Garza. It should be all of us, because this should be something that you recognize. It's, it's not a matter of opinion. It doesn't, I don't alone think that this affects myself and you. It should affect all of us. Uh, justice for Malachi Williams and free Palestine.
Your, your three minutes are up.
Thank you.
Okay, and I believe that Kayla Miller, who was not on before, is on now, and we will give Kayla Miller three minutes to speak. Kayla Miller, are you on? If you'll unmute, there you are. You have three minutes.
Uh, thank you. Um, my name is Kayla Miller. My, my brother was shot and killed, uh, by a San Marcos police officer, Malachi Williams. I called in today not only to put a spotlight on what's going on in San Marcos community, but also to reiterate our family's demands. The demands are to release the officer's name and badge number, to remove that officer that is under investigation from duty, and to allow my family to view all available footage with all siblings and with an attorney present. His life should not have been taken. San Marcos Police Department has a history of mistreating individuals, especially those with mental illness. And that's all I have to say today. Thank you.
Okay, and I don't believe that there's anyone else that was not here when I called them. I've called the names two or three times. I think we, I think I've gotten to everyone. So this ends the citizen comment portion for this evening. Council usually takes a break every ninety minutes. It's been a hundred and twenty. So we're gonna take a break. We will be back in our seats at eight-ten to continue our meeting. And we are now recessed. We can vote by the push buttons tonight. Make the meeting run a little faster, okay? Uh, call us back into our meeting from our recess, and we are to the consent agenda. The following ordinances, resolutions, and other items numbered one through nine may be acted upon by one motion. No separate or discussion is, no separate discussion or action is needed unless one of us pulls one. Does anybody want to pull anything on items one through nine?
If not, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Hold on. Yes, let's pause and see if somebody wants to.
I just had some questions about number, number, where is it? The youth stuff, like what the, what the...
Is that one of these?
Seven and eight, I think, is, or is that consent?
No, eight is scholarships for baseball kids.
No, yeah, that's why. I'm wanting to know, yeah, seven and eight. I'm interested in, uh, knowing, like, what the criteria is to get these kids.
So Ms. Garza is pulling items seven through eight, but I'll take a motion. I will take a motion to approve one through six and nine.
So moved. Second.
Through six and nine. Ms. Trevino, let's vote on those items. Oh, you get to push the button. Oh, okay.
Hey, the motion passes six-two-zero, one absent.
All right. In that case, we are on to item ten.
Receive a staff presentation, hold a public hearing to receive comments for or against ordinance 2024-21 annexing into the city approximately fifty-four point zero one-five acres in Hayes County, Texas, generally located at the southeast corner of West Centerpoint Road and Central Park Loop, case number AN-24-02, La Cima Phase Six, including procedural provisions and provide an effective date, and consider approval of ordinance 2024-21 on the first of two readings.
Presentation, Ms. Hernandez.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Amanda Hernandez, Director, Planning and Development Services. This is a request for annexation of an approximately fifty-four acre tract of land. It's located within the La Cima development, and the property will be served by the City of San Marcos Water and Wastewater, and Peternalis is the electric provider, next slide. The next item on the agenda is the associated zoning change to character District Four. The subject property is surrounded by CD four and SF four-point-five, all of which are proposed for single-family residential. Can you skip two slides, please? Today, we're holding the public hearing on the annexation ordinance. Next slide, staff recommends approval, and that concludes my presentation.
All right, I will open the public hearing. Uh, Ms. Trevino, I don't think we had anybody signed up. Is there anybody in the audience or in the lobby who wishes to speak on this item?
Eric Willis, eleven oh four Lafayette Lane, Flugerville, Texas. I'm here to answer any questions if you have them regarding La Cima.
And are you speaking in support?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Not, I will close the public hearing and look for a motion on item ten. Motion by Mr. Prather, seconded by Mr. Gonzalez. Uh, questions, concerns?
I, I've said this once before, but Eric, um, y'all are just, La Cima, you're a great, uh, community partner here in San Marcos, and, um, just thank you for your investment in our community.
Hey, I was wandering through some of the open houses this weekend.
Yeah.
Ms. Trevino? When it's blinking, we push buttons.
Oh, I was gonna say, yes.
Ready for the blinking. All right, on to item eleven.
Receive a staff presentation, hold a public hearing to receive comments for or against ordinance 2024-22, amending the official zoning map of the city in case number ZZ-24-04 by rezoning approximately fifty-five point zero one-five acres of land, generally located at the southeast corner of West Centerpoint Road and Central Park Loop in the La Cima development. From future development, District Two, character District Two, dash, four, or subject to consent of the owner, nevertheless intends zoning district classification, including procedural provisions and provide an effective date, and consider approval of ordinance 2024-22 on the first of two readings.
Presentation, Ms. Hernandez.
Mayor, Council, Amanda Hernandez, Director, Planning and Development Services. This is the zoning change associated with the previous annexation item for the forty, fifty-four acre tract within the La Cima development. Next slide. The property is currently vacant and is surrounded by vacant land and single-family uses. Next slide. The proposed character District Four zoning district will allow the proposed single-family uses is compatible with surrounding zoning districts. Next slide. The properties located within a low-intensity zone on the 2013 preferred scenario map. Next slide. The preferred scenario map sends us to table four-point-one in the development code, which then sends us to the next slide, table four-point-six, where character District Four can be considered. Next slide. The regulations of the development code and the development agreement will apply to this property. Next slide. The property is in the Edwards Aquifer Recharge Zone. However, the development agreement includes standards that mitigate the impacts to natural features. If we can skip two slides. The Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the request, and staff recommends approval. That concludes my presentation.
All right. Um, I will open the public hearing. Is there anyone in chambers or in the audience who wishes to speak on this item?
Yes, Mayor, Eric Willis, eleven oh four Lafayette Lane, Flugerville, Texas, with La Cima, here to answer any questions if you have them regarding the project, and I'm in support of this zoning.
Thank you. And, uh, Ms. Trevino, I don't believe we had anybody signed up, so I will close the public hearing and await a motion.
Motion to approve.
All right, we've got a motion to approve from Mr. Mendoza, seconded by Mr. Prather, and approval. All right. Any questions, concerns, thoughts? We can push a button.
The motion passes seven to zero.
All right, that takes us back to, um, our consent agenda items seven and eight, pulled by Ms. Garza for discussion. Ms. Trevino, let's start with item seven.
Consider approval of resolution 2024-74R, approving a funding agreement with Surg Soccer Club, Surg, allowing for American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, funds to provide scholarships for participation in youth sport leagues by underserved youth and families negatively affected by COVID-19, authorizing the city manager her designated to execute any necessary documents on behalf of the city and declare an effective date.
Ms. Garza.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I think we first approved this last year, right? Like, in the summer? Um, right? Was it a while ago? Uh, yeah.
Mayor, can we get a motion?
I'm sorry. Uh, yes, I do need a motion first. Uh, we have a motion for Mr. Scott.
Second.
Seconded from Mr. Mendoza, thank you. Okay, please proceed.
Did you pull two?
It's number seven and eight, and we're on seven right now.
I wanted to pull two.
Too late.
Uh-huh.
We can talk about, after we finish seven and eight.
Okay.
We're not gonna talk about it now.
Okay.
Ms. Garza.
Yeah, I just wanted, uh, I think anything, uh, that we're doing for the kiddos is cool, but I'm just curious, like, what, uh, what is it? What do you mean by underserved youth? Uh, yeah, like, what's the, what's the application process? Like, what?
Uh, Jamie Lee Case, Director of Parks and Recreation. Um, this is actually a project being overseen by our recreation manager, Mr. Shay Singelman. Um, this is his first appearance before city council, so I'm very excited to introduce him. Um, he's been with us about eight months now, so I'm gonna allow Shay to address your questions.
Okay.
Hello, so it's actually pretty simple. The only qualifications that a kid needs to get these scholarship funds is that they live in a QCT, Qualified Census Tract, which happens to be the majority of the city.
Um, do they or their caregivers have to be U.S. citizens?
That I'm not aware of. I know the, the basic qualification is that they live in a QCT. Beyond that, I don't, I don't know the answer to that question.
I don't think that there's questions about residency that would come into that. Would that be a requirement of the funding source?
Of the funding source? No. I don't believe so. So I think, so there has been similar programs like this, and I think one of the, the barriers has been in cities like similarly demographic to ours is that some of the requirements, um, for children participation, um, it's like multiple forms of IDs of parents or some sort of insurance and like stuff like that, so I'm just curious as to what all of that looks like here.
Loheid Meagle, Director of Administrative Services. I don't think, no, we're not checking any of that. Um, there are many different levels that qualify for ARPA funding. One of the simplest ones for the City of San Marcos is if you live in a Qualified Census Tract. And basically, if you're able to check that, and that's what this program is using, then, then you get the benefit.
Now, are they applying directly to the City of San Marcos? Are they applying through Surg?
Now, are they applying directly to the City of San Marcos? Are they applying through Sarge? Like, are we giving the pot of money to Sarge, and we have an agreement with Sarge, who then administers?
That's what this is. This is the agreement with Sarge, so.
Cool. Yeah, I just wanna make sure that there's like, it's not limited to just like citizenship status, but, um, yeah, some of the, the first programs that were rolled out, um, I think some, uh, lessons learned was, uh, making things like accessible and equitable and all of that, so I think that's cool. Um, and I guess the, it was like a similar question for the, than the other one, but we'll wait. Basically, we're giving the money to these folks. These folks are handling that, and they have done soccer club stuff, right?
Correct. Now, all the registration is done through them. They have all the records of addresses and stuff like that, so that's who it's going to.
Cool, okay. Uh, that's all I got.
Any other questions? If not, we'll vote on item seven and.
Okay, the motion passes seven to zero.
And we're on to item eight.
Consider approval of resolution twenty twenty-four dash seventy-five R approving a funding agreement with San Marcos Youth Baseball and Softball Association, allowing for American Rescue Plan Act funds to provide scholarships for participation in youth sport leagues by underserved youth and families negatively affected by COVID- nineteen, authorizing the city manager her designate to execute any necessary documents on behalf of the city and declare an effective date.
Most to approve. Second.
Uh, motion by Mr. Scott, seconded by Mr. Gleason. Ms. Garza.
So for this one, the money's going straight to the SMYBSA? Gotcha. Um, and with the same criteria? Okay. Um, I guess, I think I do have one to ask, and I hope that the folks who are gonna be running these programs take this into consideration. I heard some conversation online about deadlines, um, for some folks to apply for some, I think it was sports clubs. Um, I don't know if you guys frequent the Cheese Muscle Facebook pages, but I do. Um, and it was like, it closed, like, in the middle of the day, and I just, like, I think caregivers were just expressing, like, that that was a little bit difficult to navigate, um, you know, in the middle of doing caretaking, um, to submit that by, like, noon. So I think that's just one thing that pops in my head, but aside from that, I, I think it's helpful to know that we are opening this up to the majority of kiddos in our community. That's all I got.
It's only for San Marcos kids?
Oh, yes.
It's only for our San Marcos residents?
Mr. Mendoza.
I, I mean, school, school paperwork.
It is a criteria that they are a San Marcos resident. They, or they, that they, their address is within San Marcos.
Right, right.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I just, or hope that the, the folks who are managing these programs, um, get, like, are, uh, helpful, and folks may be securing documentation to prove residency. That is not limited to, like, more difficult to obtain forms of documentation. And it's not, so like, if you have to prove that you're from, like, you're a resident in Marcos, maybe something from the school or something like that. And that's not just for non-citizens. I think generally, um, folks getting, um, access to, like, renewing their IDs has been such a hassle, per the Facebook page, Cheese My Groups. Um, can't, that's not, that's, that's not our responsibility, so, um, that's the DMV. But, yeah, uh, the community enhanced library card, stuff like that would be cool.
Okay, I was gonna make this statement when I voted, just so y'all know, and if y'all have a problem with me voting on this, I won't, but I have sponsored a youth baseball team since about nineteen ninety, more years than not. And this year, I have a baseball and a softball team. I'm not making any money on this deal at all. I'm providing money into the program, but if anybody has an issue, let me know.
I, I do have an issue, Mayor. I think you ought to do it for the next twenty years as well.
I probably will. I do it to honor my dad, who's one of the founders of Little League in San Marcos, Texas, so. Okay, so, but y'all are okay with me voting on this?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, then we'll vote.
Okay, the motion passes seven to zero.
All right, now, Mr. Scott, did you have perhaps a, uh, motion to reconsider for us?
Perhaps.
Now would be the time.
Number two.
It was, it's something, he wants to pull something on consent off, and he did vote on the prevailing side. So. Mr. Scott, now's the time, or I need to move on?
Yes.
What is it that you want to do?
Number two. I just wanted, have, um, whoever's handling it, I just wanted to know.
You want, and, do you want to consider, reconsider item two?
Yes, I'd like to reconsider item two.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Scott to reconsider item two. It will need a second. We will need a vote on that, and if it passes, then we can do.
Hey, Mayor, wouldn't reconsider have to come from someone who actually supported it?
He did.
He did. We all voted on the consent.
Shane did not. He did? Oh, okay, all right. Just making sure it was recorded properly.
He was absent during the consent.
Oh, you're right. Yeah, he did.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to reconsider.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
I missed that too. Okay, motion to reconsider, uh, is by Mr. Gleason. I still need a second.
I'll second that.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mendoza. Let's vote on that. This is, do you even want to talk about it again? And then you'll choose how you want to vote on it if this passes.
The motion passes seven to zero.
All right, so we'll let Ms., uh, we'll have Ms. Trevino read it, and then we will consider it.
Consider approval of resolution twenty twenty-four dash sixty-nine R approving an agreement providing for the city to sell water on a temporary basis to the City of Kyle, authorizing the city manager her designate to execute the agreement on behalf of the city and declare an effective date.
Most to approve.
Motion for Mr. Scott, seconded by.
Second. Second.
And I assume those are both for approval? All right.
Yes, ma'am, that's what I, yeah, yes.
Sure.
Okay, your concerns?
My, my concern is that, like Mrs. Parker indicated, I would hope that they would mirror, or could we ask them to mirror the same restrictions, information, commercialism, enforcement, as we do with our water supply for, and sell them water? Can we throw that in there?
It's in there.
Um, Tommy Yorth, Director of Utilities, uh, that's already in the agreement.
Okay.
Uh, this is, uh, you know, you might recall that we passed a similar agreement for them, uh, the end of last year, and that was absolutely one of the things that we put in there.
I didn't know that carried over.
They are required to meet or exceed our requirements, uh, and have been doing so, and they have a very aggressive enforcement program. So, uh, they're completely dialed in, and, um, they are definitely executing that part of the agreement.
Great, thank you.
All we had to do is threaten them and say, we'll give them that other type of water. Y'all know what I'm talking about.
The magic water.
Mayor, I did have a question, actually, if you don't mind.
Okay, and then I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a statement that was in the agenda review form.
Oh, okay, I just had a quick question. Um, it was mentioned earlier about how Texas State just uses, um, water from the aquifer. They're not tied into the other water systems that we use. Is that correct?
Texas State, Texas State has their own water supply system. They have their own wells, uh, and their own permits from the Edwards Aquifer. They are not connected to city water, so we don't provide them wholesale water from any of our other water supplies. They pull that. And, and when I say that, I want to quantify that, that's main campus, right? Not their, you know, satellite areas that we feed as commercial customers, but, uh, main campus is on their own water system.
And they're directly getting water from the Edwards Aquifer?
Yes, sir.
Um, would that in any way affect how, I mean, are we considering their usage whenever we're looking at the drought? I mean, I'm not too sure how that would.
As, as an Edwards, Edwards Aquifer permit holder, they're, they are, um, required to follow the same reductions, capacity reductions that we are. Uh, so they, they have, uh, I mean, I don't know their conservation drought restriction plan by heart, but they, they also have, uh, the same capacity reductions that we follow.
Thank you.
But we do get them, we, let me rephrase it. We do charge them for wastewater.
We do, uh, so they use their own Edwards Aquifer rights, but they discharge back into our wastewater system, so, uh, they're one of our larger wastewater customers.
At least we got them there.
And are they using some reused water?
Uh, if you know the water tower that we just put in a couple of years ago on Highway one twenty-three, it's got the big purple rattler symbol on it. That's a project that the city put in to enable them, uh, to use our reclaimed water. We have a contract with them on that. Uh, the pipe, uh, that the city installed was somewhere up on Sesam. Uh, campus itself, though, has not, uh, converted their sprinkler and irrigation systems. There's other things traditionally that you would use reclaimed water for. Uh, they've, they've not connected and enabled that system yet, but we did complete our project.
Right.
Uh, you might remember as well that we, um, uh, as part of that agreement is where we acquired some additional water rights that allowed us to enter the Canyon Regional Project. So we'll get additional water in return for having provided them that reclaim, but as of today, uh, they're not drawing reclaimed water from our wastewater plant.
Well, we've got it to them.
We've got it to them. We've, we've met our requirements.
Okay, and I want to, um, and I think whoever wrote up this agenda request form for putting this last sentence in here, which is, there is no impact to the aquifer because of this transaction. The City of Kyle will draw the same amount of water from the aquifer with or without this assignment of water through this agreement. I'd like to mention something else up here. There is a minimum of seven hundred and thirty-two thousand, six hundred and twenty-four dollars. There's a maximum of almost one point five million in here.
Yes, ma'am, and you can expect to see that exact same logic in a couple of weeks when we bring you the county line, uh, Edwards Agreement that we need to renew. Uh, that was an agreement that we put in place three years ago, uh, for the same reasons that City of Kyle, you know, are Alliance Regional Partner. They need to, County Line needs to extend that out, uh, through twenty twenty-six as well, and we've agreed to that. We'll have that resolution and agreement ready for you in a couple of weeks, and it'll have that same language.
All righty. I don't see any other questions, so we will now vote by pushing a button, the button of your choice. But push a button.
The motion passes seven to zero.
All right, now we are on to item twelve.
Consider approval of ordinance twenty twenty-four dash twenty-three on the first of two readings, authorizing the installation of speed cushions in both directions in the six hundred through thirteen hundred blocks of Barbara Drive from River Road to Buckling, including procedural provisions and providing effective date.
Most to approve.
Motion by Mr. Scott, seconded by Mr. Mendoza. Are there any questions? I think the packet was very, very complete. Thank you, and, uh, thanks for asking my question about the stop signs, although I know that's for a different purpose. I was just curious, 'cause I didn't remember any on there.
I got something, Mayor.
Go ahead.
So I'm, I'm glad to see this go in, and, uh, it was very interesting data on Barbara Drive. It kind of confirmed what we've all kind of been thinking. I had someone drive by my house last night doing about eighty miles an hour, and it looks like we're seeing that about once a day on Barbara or Conway, um, statistically, according to your guys' stats. One thing I will ask is that, um, as these are installed, that we please keep an eye on Conway? Like, that we go back and relook at, because I'm already gonna hear from people who are just gonna.
Don't you need to just do the same process?
Well, I do, but I want to see the stats. Those statistics really are telling of the speed reports of, of how, how, you know, when somebody says to me, that way of speeding in the neighborhood. It's like, well, how much is it really, right? Is it five percent, two percent, or twenty percent, right? So I really appreciate that data, and it kind of confirms what we're all been talking about. But, yeah, as soon as these are installed, I would like to see Conway kind of restudied, because it's gonna reimpact us as.
Yeah, I think there's a process for that.
Yeah, but I wanted to put it out there, but other than that, I'm glad to see them going. I mean, that's, I'm tired of speeding in the neighborhood.
Well, they are gonna ask, how come many, you know? The people who live in Conway are gonna ask.
Well, we kind of already have, but it's really Barbara's been the problem, because it's so wide, right? And, and, and it really is a difference, and, um, and we see it, right? Um, and there's not a stop sign down through there like we have a couple right there.
But, but if they want it, somebody on Conway needs to take the initiative, takes a petition around, do the work.
But it's easier for petition if I have the data. That's what I'm saying. Like, if I go to my neighbors and say, hey, look at this, this is, this is what we're seeing, it's easier for me to get a petition going.
Yeah, I got you, but I don't think you can get the petition, because you get a vote on it.
I can, but I can pass the data.
That's right, yeah.
Send them the link to the process. Ms. Trevino, let's vote.
Okay, the motion passes seven to zero.
All right, on to item thirteen.
Consider approval of resolution twenty twenty-four dash sixty-seven R supporting the granting of economic development incentives under Chapter three eighty of the Texas Local Government Code for a grocery store development. Such incentives to include property and sales tax rebates up to five years from the resolution adoption and declare an effective date.
Most to approve.
Second.
All right, actually, it's not exactly a motion to approve, and we're gonna need, um, I'll take that, but we've got to provide some criteria that Mr. Smith has a presentation to explain some of this to us. And if you would, when we start getting ready to sum this up, if you'll just kind of work with me on it. Okay.
That's right, there are a lot, a lot of moving parts.
Yes, there are.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Christian Smith, Economic and Business Development Manager. Uh, so staff has heard from the community and council, uh, a desire to see more grocery store development, uh, constructed in San Marcos, and so today, staff is requesting that council consider supporting economic development incentives for grocery store development. Uh, my presentation this evening will just go through some of the objectives of that, of that support, um, quickly examine some projects that our neighbors have participated in, outline a few scenarios of what that support could look like, um, and then we'll have some decision points for council to consider at the end. Uh, so again, uh, the, the objective of, of the, uh, resolution of support for, uh, grocery store incentives is to encourage that kind of development by making this investment more attractive and to speed up that timeline for construction, trying to attract grocery development that serves customers beyond the neighborhood level, and as I'll explain in the next slide, we have, um, a, a number of, uh, people, of, uh, providers who do, um, who, who sell, uh, retail food products, but a lot of times that trade area is located to a, to a neighborhood or a smaller geographical area. When you think of something like some of the bigger grocery retailers we have, they serve a larger trade area, so that's what we're considering in, uh, in this presentation. And so the map just shows, uh, a few examples of those stores that, that I'm, that I'm mentioning. Next slide. Uh, so quickly, just, uh, staff did some research on some of our neighbors that have participated in grocery store incentives. Uh, so back in, uh, twenty fifteen, uh, City of Broffels engaged in an economic development incentive, uh, with HEB for an eight hundred thousand dollar grant, plus a one-third sales tax rebate for five years up to seven hundred thousand, which was a value of one point five million. Um, for that, their economic development incentive agreement required the construction of a one hundred and twenty thousand square foot store with an additional twenty-nine thousand square feet of inline retail, uh, call wash and fuel stations, and they required a hundred and eight full-time jobs and a minimum capital investment of fourteen million dollars. Next slide. More recently, uh, last year, the City of Kyle, uh, participated in a similar agreement with Sprouts. Uh, they offered a one-time three hundred thousand dollar grant plus a fifty percent, uh, property tax rebate for seven years, uh, up to, uh, nine hundred and fifty thousand. For that, they required, uh, a much smaller store footprint, twenty-three thousand square foot store with eighteen thousand square feet of inline retail and some enhanced architectural design. Their agreement did not have, uh, jobs or capital investment minimums. Next slide. So staff is recommending, um, on that table there, uh, what, what we would consider an offer for, uh, for economic development incentives. Um, you know, this is something I think that is, um, aggressive and would, would, would catch attention. Of course, what that final number looks like is certainly up to council's discretion, but what we're looking at here is a property and sales tax rebate of equal proportion of a one hundred percent in year one, drawing down to twenty-five percent in year five for that five-year period. Um, staff would recommend, um, that that, that that store footprint would be a minimum of twenty thousand square feet, um, and to take advantage of the particular resolution of support that's under consideration tonight, that, that developer, that grocery store would have to break ground while this resolution is active, so during that five-year period, to try to encourage some sense of urgency. Um, we would encourage not having a limit to the number of eligible stores, rather giving staff the discretion to go out and recruit these projects for staff, for council to consider as they become available. Next slide. So I'll run through these really, really quickly. Um, one scenario, what that tax impact, what that fiscal impact of such an incentive could look like on the city's, um, uh, returns. Uh, this would be for a twenty thousand square foot store with that same incentive structure outlined on the top table, um, over a five-year period, uh, would net, uh, would net a sales and property tax collection of just shy of two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Next slide. Scenario two, this would be a fifty thousand square foot store, and just for reference, the national average for, for grocery stores is about forty-eight thousand square feet, so that, you know, the, the, the average size. Um, same incentive structure would yield about, uh, seven hundred thousand dollars in net revenue to the city. Next slide. And scenario three, a hundred and twenty thousand square foot store, so exactly analogous to the New Broffels location, under the same incentive agreement, uh, incentive structure would yield about one point six million dollars in revenue over that five-year period. Next slide. So staff recommends that council approve a resolution supporting economic development incentives for grocery store development, and then I will be requesting additional council direction on what that incentive structure would look like. Next slide. And some of those items for consideration would be, does council want to move forward with this kind of proposal? Uh, does council want to support development of a particular scale? So in other words, are you looking for a smaller building footprint, a larger building footprint? Um, and then does council want to limit the number of stores? So how many, um, how many individual companies or how many stores could take advantage or, or, or request those incentives under, under that, uh, support structure? And I will, I will turn it back over.
Okay, council, the first question is, do we even want to? Okay, council. The first question is, do we even want to discuss this? And the answer is overwhelming yes. Okay, that's what I thought, just needed to make sure. I wanted to hear the yeses. Next question, I would like to go with, do we want to limit the number of stores? Now, we'll take applications from all who wish to apply, correct?
Correct.
Or actually, go ahead.
Correct, Mayor. And just to clarify, nothing in this resolution that you're looking at today would disqualify or prevent any other retailer or prospective business from taking advantage or doing a request of our existing three-day structure? This is something that would exist in tandem?
Because when I looked at the map, and y'all can look at the map, I think it was page 394 or something, well, I don't know what it is up here. You'll notice that there is a, we've talked about food deserts. There's kind of a food desert out on my end of town over there, La Sima, there's food desert over here. So do we want to limit this to one, or do we want to see what happens, figure it out?
Free market, let's plug it in.
I want this to stay open and on the floor, potential is an option, until we feel like we've got enough grocery stores, right? It's one of the number-one issues we hear from everybody, and... That's right.
All right. So now, we need to make some decisions on, I would like us to talk about time span. There were, if you'll notice on the other two, there was a cash grant upfront to see if you want to do that. Do you want to do property tax, sales tax? Do we want to talk about fuel sales or not, car wash or not? Yes. Do we want to ask for an enhanced architectural design? And I'm going to tell you upfront, I don't mind the five. I have said before, I'm not for 100% on property tax. I'm still not going to be 100% on property tax. I'm just not, not, not for year one.
I'd say like 80% start with that.
I can be there. I would rather do the sales tax than the property tax. I'd like to see us get the property tax if that's a deal. Now, would it be fair to say, Mr. Smith, that once we have an application, anything's negotiable?
That's exactly correct, Mayor. And just to be clear, there is nothing that is on the table tonight that, let's say, council move forward with the proposed incentive structure put in a resolution. If another grocery store were to come along and request an incentive, nothing that you're looking at today would preclude you from tailoring a structure in an agreement separate from this.
We're just kind of putting it out there what we're looking at mostly.
Exactly. It's almost like, it's like a first offer, just to let people know that we're ready for business and want to see that kind of commercial development take place here.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
So do we know, or has anybody tried to assess why? Why have we haven't been successful in recording grocery stores, or does that make sense? I feel like that's helpful in understanding, like what's the historical context, and I've asked this before. Like, who do we piss off? I'm so serious.
Well, additional staff might be able to comment on the history. What I can say, just in some of the market indicators that I've looked at, is usually there are two main things that that kind of development's going to depend on, and that's incomes and, what am I looking for, and rooftops. So community income and rooftop. So do you have enough people to support the store, and do they have the buying power to sustain it? Those are typically the two big things that they'll, that they look at.
Okay, so let me ask. Interesting.
Mayor, I'm going to weigh in on the 100%, 80%. I, too, am almost adamantly opposed to 100%. Now, that being said, I am going to make an exception for this, and partially because it looks like our neighboring cities have had to do a grant upfront. So it actually threw money at them, where if we do this, it's not going to cost us anything upfront. Like, it's just a reimbursement. So I would rather do that. And according to your math, I think what they did in Kyle or New Broffels for the 120,000 square feet would be very equivalent to a five-year. And that way, they know if somebody is, a company is struggling, and they go, wow, you know, that extra 20% could make a difference whether they come here. So I'm willing to sweeten this deal however we got to do it to try to attract something. So I'm going to be for 100%.
And are you for zero on the cash grant?
No one on the cash grant. I do not want to throw money upfront, but I would be willing to do that.
Okay.
And if I could just make a quick comment about the cash grants, you know, doing cash grants, economic development incentives are generally commonplace. I will say, given the tools that we have in our toolbox today, cash grants aren't really something that we're really able to offer, certainly not at the scale of our neighbors at this point, hence kind of front-loading those abatements or rebates on the front side.
And that's why I appreciate the numbers, because when you do the math, it kind of works out in the end to almost the same equivalent. Except we don't have to front the money.
Okay, so what I need to do is go around the table quickly and ask each of you, cash grant, and are you willing to start at 100%? Mr. Mendoza.
No on the cash grant, and no, I will not be starting at 100%.
All right, Mr. Gonzalez.
No, no.
No and no?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Ms. Garza?
If they put it on the east side, they can have whatever they want. I'm so serious. So I don't, I don't, I don't...
You're okay with either one?
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Scott?
No and no.
All right. Mr. Prather?
Yes.
Yes. Yes, because this is a very important topic in our community, but yes and yes in both.
Okay, we've got four that are no to 100%. I can do 90, I just can't do the 100. I just can't. 90?
I really, someone brought up 80 earlier. I really liked that one.
The reason why I even chose 80 is because we are the fastest-growing area. So these other grocery stores are already implanted. They don't really have other way to go in between that area when these new neighborhoods are growing.
Okay. I'm going to go around again. 80 or 90? Ms. Prather? Either? Okay. Mr. Scott?
80.
Ms. Garza? Either. Okay, Mr. Gonzalez?
80.
Mr. Gleason? Oh, I'm sorry, you were okay at 100. Mr. Mendoza?
I'll change it to 90. Yeah, that's fine. So we're going to get us closer.
Mr. Mendoza?
80, please.
One, two, three. We've got four for 80, so we'll start with 80. Sales tax.
Mayor, if you don't mind, explain the rationale why you really go with sales tax instead of property tax. I just want to hear your rationale on it.
Well, I guess it all goes into the general fund. I just want to see that property tax come in. But on the sales tax, the better they do, the better we both do in the sales tax. So I, I'm not, no, that I, I don't know that I can fully explain it, but I'd just like to get the property tax. The sales tax, we can...
And one thing about the sales tax on groceries is not a lot of it is taxed. So it's not as big of a number as something like giving 100% abatement to somebody who's selling. I don't know what the percentages are, but...
It's about 60%.
60% is not taxable or is taxable?
Is taxable.
Is taxable.
Of course, it depends on...
They sell a lot of shampoo and pots and pans, and some of them do.
They do, but I just wanted to throw that out there. That also weighed in on me a little bit, like we're not giving them, like some of that's not taxable anyway. So it's not quite as big of a number.
And I think the reason why historically the council has tended to go with sales tax instead of property tax is because they wanted something to be more performance-based. So that was something where, again, to what Mayor Houston's point, is that it's performance-based based on how well they're doing with their advertising, marketing, sales, all that.
I'm buying it. You sold me. Good idea. Thank you.
Okay, here's my next question. And I actually have my grid here to be, does it matter to you what size the store is and how we structure all of this? A small store, because we, I really think we need something out 123. We need something within walking distance for all those low-income, light seed, low-income housing tax credit. I think I have that right. We've got a lot of those properties out there. It doesn't have to be a huge store that sells lawn chairs, but we need a grocery store there. There's a very small one at the front of Cottonwood Creek, Dollar General selling some groceries. It's not what we need for the whole community.
Personally, I'd rather have the big HEBs, something that size.
I think we need a really big one, but we also need the small ones, and I didn't make that clear, so.
And a lot of, a lot of the companies don't do big ones. I stop in Aldi's all over, and they're not, they're not 70,000 square feet, right?
Neither are the Poco Locos, but that new one in that old Half Price books, they ain't got a lot of food in there.
It's changing my world, right? Like, it really is. I don't know how big that Poco Loco store is, but they have great prices. It's in the neighborhood, like it is, it is really opening up the doors.
We got five in Kyle. We got five in Kyle.
But, and so I'm not, I don't want to restrict any, because there might be a piece of property that they, that someone might be willing a little bit of a micro-style store that wouldn't work otherwise. So I'm, I'm going to leave this as open-ended as we can it. Whatever might come our way, I don't want to restrict it in any way possible.
Well, my question is, might you want fewer years for a smaller store? Do you want to start with a different percent?
I want it to be that they come in here, that they look at all of their options, too. That's the other thing, too. When a corporation comes, they go, well, we have to do a big one here. I want them to go, well, maybe we could a small one there, right?
Well, the thing is, a small one, three years, a medium five years, and a big one, seven years, does that matter to y'all? Or do you want to just do the same structure throughout?
Same structure.
I think what matters to me is, and I know, I don't know how this works, y'all know this. Whoever's also going to bring in more jobs, right? So I think food deserts is like an inaccurate way to describe what our neighbors are going through. Like, it's an oversimplification, because food insecurity doesn't equal just like mere lack of access to food. Like, the socioeconomic factors are too, like can they afford it? And folks need jobs to afford stuff. So when it comes to size, like I don't know, like I don't, all I know is I want it, I want something, my priority is the east side, something that's going to bring jobs. Like, that's, y'all do the rest.
Yeah, when I first heard the phrase "food desert" was when Dr. Marquez was on here, and it's when we were approving some of those light seed projects on 123. And that's why I'm looking at location, wherever they are. You know, there'll be jobs. So, okay, so y'all are saying the same structure, like they're recommending a five-year? Y'all just good with the five-year, no matter what size the store is?
Yes.
Okay, that's going to make this a whole lot easier. And are we, we're not going to limit or put a minimum on the size of the store, correct? We'll entertain?
Well, I'm kind of sitting here wondering if 50,000 should be the minimum, because let's get something solid. Let's show something here.
You might eliminate some companies that don't build 50,000 square foot.
Well, that's fine, but if we're talking large chain...
I don't think the Poco Loco is that big, and I don't care if they're a chain or what they are. Remember, there was one that wanted to come in over on my end of town, but because of the fuel sales, it was declined on the planning and zoning commission.
I mean, we want, we want, obviously, like we could use like two big giant HEBs, right?
Probably.
But we, we don't want to limit what might come forward, right? Like, we don't know, we don't know. But I do know this, there are a lot of grocery stores that do not have 50,000 square foot.
And they fill a need.
And they fill a huge need, and if not, they're the only primary grocery store in town and can, and fill the county's needs. So I just want to see as much flexibility with this, you know.
Well, you never know, they could build two stores, one a big one and one a small one.
That's right.
I'm just trying to think of our anticipated growth here, I mean, as if 20,000.
Okay, so we're talking about a time span of five years regardless of the size of the store, correct?
Right.
Yes, everybody? Ms. Prather? Okay. We're going to have property tax start at 80, so...
I thought it was sales tax.
Well, no, we, we're talking about property tax right now. We said we're not going to start with 100. We'll start with 80, and y'all figure out how that tapers down. Are we good with that? Okay, so we're going to start at 80. And what do y'all want to do on sales tax?
Get all we can get.
100% upfront.
Yeah.
100% back to them, or we keep the 100%?
100% back to them, exactly like he has it up there right now, for the sales tax.
Okay, so you want to go sales tax as recommended?
Yep.
So I'm just going to say start with 100 and five years. I need answers from the rest of you. You're good with that, Ms. Prather?
I like the way you set it, Mayor, if they do well, then they get more money back, and we, the community benefits from all of it.
I'm not trying to LARP as an economic incentive wizard, so I'm just going to default to the group again. I don't, I don't...
Okay.
East side, good jobs. That's all I care.
Mr. Scott?
I'm kind of at 80% still, just kind of growth.
Start with 80, five years?
Yeah.
That's where I am. Mr. Gonzalez, need to hear from you, and then Mr. Mendoza. 80 and the five years?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Mendoza?
80 and five years as well. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I've got one, two, three, four for 80, two for 100. Let's start with 80, but again, depending on who it is and what they bring to the table and what they have to offer, we may end up somewhere different. Do we want any kind of bonus points on location? I guess we'll see as they come in. They will, but, but the question is, how much do we want to incentivize it? Right now, if somebody wanted to come in, they could come in and build one. Provided it had the proper zoning and permits and all that, they would need us.
Well, and getting back to Ms. Garza's, getting back to Ms. Garza's point, it might, it might be that that might be one where like, hey, we heard you guys really want us on the east side, how about that 100% then, right? Like, that might be one, I'd be willing to discuss at that point if they, location might matter, but I don't want to put a criteria on that now.
I'll just tell you, far west side needs a two. I'm not going to comment on that.
Find us several.
Okay. Do we care about whether or not there's fuel sales? Are we concerned about fuel sales? Do we even want to talk about fuel sales?
It don't matter to me.
Just wait and see, and of course, it depends on if it passes muster everywhere else. Okay, so we don't care about that. Car wash? Do we want, and what I'm saying is, do we want to ask them to do that? We got so many car washes opened up now.
That's up to them.
Okay, so if they want to do it, fine, but no extra points for car wash. Enhanced architectural design. I can be in for that. Yes, okay, so I'm a yes, and if they don't, they're still on the list for...
Yeah.
Whatever, okay. Mr. Gonzalez, but you would like to see if we can get enhanced architectural design? Mr. Gleason?
It's another one of those where I don't want to impede on anybody having a structure, a template that they're using to build their stores. They may say, well, if you do some different design on it, I want to keep this as streamlined as possible, so I'm a no.
I'm with you on that, okay. I understand where you come from. Ms. Mendoza?
I'd like to see an answer.
Okay, it's not a requirement, but they just might get another 5%. Mr. Prather, Mr. Scott? All else being the same? Scott, yes. Okay, so we've got five yeses. What have I missed, Mr. Smith?
I think the only other thing that wasn't mentioned was just if you wanted, and if I missed it before, was if the same company or the same store could build two locations and get the same incentive, or if you wanted one deal for one company.
I think we said we'll entertain all offers, didn't we?
That's it.
Yeah.
Competition's a good thing.
Yeah, so, but if, but if it's one brand that wants to come put in three strategically placed? Okay, so now, Mr. Gary. Do I need to read all this into the record as an amendment in order to complete this? Or we have a motion and a second to do incentives? We've had a conversation with Mr. Smith. I think we all know what we're talking about. Do we need to put these in the motion? Put your, bring your microphone over, please.
That would help.
Thank you.
I think an amendment would be appropriate, just to, for the record, that the items you've listed shall be added to the resolution as the scoring criteria.
Okay, so I will move to amend.
I don't think you need to recite them verbally, but just to say that the items you've discussed.
Yeah, if I'm, if I'm going to make an amendment, I'm going to, I'm going to read them out right now so we're all clear.
Alrighty.
Okay, so, and council, y'all, anybody stop me if I say something incorrect, because I got a lot of scribbles here.
Mayor, do we need to formalize, we're going to, do you want to amend the main motion?
Yes.
And second?
Well, I need to state it first.
Okay.
As the amendment. Okay, so the amendment will be that the time span will be five years. No cash grant upfront. Property tax starts at 80%, and we're leaving it to staff to taper that down. Sales tax starts at 80%. And we would like to see enhanced architectural design, however, we will entertain any and all offers. I'll look for a second on that. Thank you. Let's vote on the amendments to make sure we've got all that square.
My yes actually means it's not a no, but again, my only two criteria is east side and good jobs. My yes actually means it's not a no, but again, my only two criteria is east side and good jobs.
Okay.
The motion passes seven to zero.
All right, so let's vote on the main motion as amended.
Okay, the motion passes seven to zero.
All right, and now we wait. Okay, on to item 14.
Consider approval of resolution 2024-68R, approving an amended template for standard city board and commission bylaws in accordance with section 2.073 of the San Marcos City Code, directing staff liaisons to boards and commissions to present such bylaws for adoption by their respective boards and commissions and declare an effective date.
Motion by Mr. Scott, was that Mr. Gleason?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you. And we have a template for our standard city board and commission bylaws. When we split City Code 2045 Rules of Decorum, you'll recall that we split it into two sections. 2045 is now all related to citizen comment, including sign-up rules, et cetera. The remaining items that were actually rules of decorum are put into section 2046. The bylaws for our boards and commissions reference those and use those. So I got the bylaws and started working on that, and then I got to looking and going, ooh, there's some new things, such as, since they were last written, we have the Zoom option for meetings. However, the chair has to be on site, and so we added that in there.
Wait, for, for boards and commissions, the chairs have, has to be on site?
Is that correct, Mr. Gary?
Hmm. That's correct, the presiding officer of the meeting, whether it's chair, vice chair, need to be in, present to meet the Open Meetings Act for virtual meetings.
Yeah.
Interesting.
Yeah.
Council committees, how does it work for council committees?
Oh, is this council committees too?
This is not for council committee.
Yeah, so y'all are, y'all are fine.
This is the ARCs board, this is.
Yeah, I'm just, if it is for, like, the Open Meetings Act, I get it, but, yeah, when it comes to, I mean, the fact is that they're doing this on a volunteer basis for free, and sometimes, like, accessibility or getting here is an issue, and so that, that's a bummer, but I guess, like, we have to.
Right, it's.
It has to be the presiding officer?
Yeah.
Right, so say the chair is out, if the vice chair steps in that day, as long as the vice chair who's running the meeting, then that would be.
Or, if the chair is online and can't preside, but they can participate with someone else, such as the vice chair being the presiding officer.
That's correct, like, say the chair is ill or something, has an emergency, but the meeting could still go on with the full board, as long as one person is there as the presiding officer.
Okay, does the.
Really creates flexibility.
Gotcha, and that is understood in all, like, this is a lot of purple and yellow and red lines, but the verbiage in there, that, that makes it all, like, people get that when they read this?
Well, they will have, of course, 100% clean version, but the liaisons for the boards and commissions are supposed to go over that with them, so hopefully they'll get an opportunity for questions and answers.
Okay, yeah, that would be cool.
To help explain the rules.
Liz, Liz is the expert, yes, and we did bring in four people who are, who are staff liaisons for numerous boards and experienced with others, and we sent it to them for comment. Went around a couple times, we got everybody together, and they brought some things to the table that they had kind of wished were in the bylaws, that weren't. And one of the big things we changed, that's already been appreciated, is it used to be you had to wait 30 minutes without a quorum in order to say, okay, we're all going home. Now we say you may call it at 15, but you don't have to, because if somebody calls and says at 12 after, I'm behind a train, but I can get there, and that will make the quorum, then you can wait, but you don't have to. So there's some groups that were, so anyway, there's a whole lot of work and many hours that went into this. This was the end result. We think it's going to work, but of course, anything that y'all have, that you're seeing that we didn't, or you'd like to add, now would be a great time.
And also a reminder, for what it's worth, is that individual boards can request modifications for just unique to that board, and it goes to the, I believe, the Audit and Finance Committee.
Right.
So there's still opportunity to customize these, if it's appropriate for a particular board.
Correct, this is the basic template, like, Planning and Zoning Commission has some things that are different from others, and so they will modify theirs as they needed. Anything, did I miss anything? Any questions? Then, Ms. Trevino, will the.
Okay, the motion passes seven to zero.
All right, and on to item 15.
Consider approval of resolution 2024-77R, approving a contract with the Pounds Group LLC DBA Sullivan Contracting Services through the Choice Partners Purchasing Cooperative for indefinite delivery indefinite quantity of concrete construction services for the Public Works Department in an amount not to exceed $1 million per year, authorizing city manager her designate to execute the contract on behalf of the city and declare an effective date.
Most approve.
Motion by Mr. Scott, seconded by, I'll second it. Questions, concerns? Mr. Rossing is here, just in case we have questions. If not, we'll vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
And Mr. Rossing gets to go home. And Mr. Avila, item 16.
Consider approval of resolution 2024-78R, approving an agreement with Clint Jones, owner of Fleming Farms, Highlander SM2, Rattler Ridge LP, and JLPC BC, Seven Ten Investments LLC, owner of Sedona South, to provide for the sharing of costs for the construction of a wastewater treatment plant, which will serve their developments and other city needs. Authorizing city manager designate to execute the agreement on behalf of the city and declare an effective date.
Most approve.
Motion by Mr. Scott, seconded by Mr. Gleason. We do have some amendments that we need, and I think they're gonna be on the screen. I will present those amendments as you see them on the screen. And they're, maybe they're gonna come up in a, there we go. So do I need to read these into the record, or are we good with the?
The screen will suffice.
Okay, all right.
Just as shown on the screen.
I'll second your motion to amend, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Gleason. So what we have first, is there something that you need to discuss with us, Mr. Hill? Okay. Okay, any questions on the amendment?
Vote.
Let's vote.
Okay, the motion passes six to zero with one absent.
All right, questions on the rest of the agreement? We'll vote on that, too.
Mr. Gonzalez, can, hopefully he'll take it.
This button's not working.
No, we're gonna have.
I see him pushing it, his buttons aren't blinking, now they are.
Yeah, because I tallied it there.
Oh, okay.
Okay, motion passes six to zero with one absent.
All right, thank y'all very much.
Your man.
Rolling on to item 17.
Discuss and consider appointments to various boards and commissions to wit A, art commission, B, citizen utility advisory board, C, construction board of appeals, D, convention and visitors bureau board, E, human services advisory board, F, neighborhood commission, G, parking advisory board, H, senior citizen advisory board, I, veteran affairs advisory board.
Okay, counsel, we've done this before. So if you've got your list. We will start with the citizen, oh, I'm sorry, we'll start with the arts commission. Anybody? We'll put a pin in that one, citizen utility advisory board. Okay, we have a bunch of people on the list, but it was not their, I don't think they even checked it. Yes, ma'am.
Are you on to the citizens utility advisory?
Yep.
According to my matrix, Michael Markowitz had it as their first choice. On the matrix.
Oh, I see, I was looking in the other column, okay, did you want to?
I'll nominate him.
Okay.
We only need one, right?
Uh, correct. B, citizen utility board. Citizen utility advisory board.
Michael Markowitz.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, it was his first.
Yeah, it's his first choice.
Are there any others? If not, this will be a one-for-one vote.
Mr. Gonzalez. All right, the motion passes seven to zero.
I'm seeing him push his button, and it's just not catching. Okay, so we're all, so there, construction board of appeals.
I'm gonna nominate Tempura Gudis. You'll need to go with Ms. Gudis, please.
Any other nominees? If not, this will be a one-for-one.
Which one was this?
Construction.
Construction, okay.
Convention and visit, oh, I'm sorry.
There you go, motion passes seven to zero.
Convention and visitors bureau board, these are our outlet reps, and we have Jarrett Metters for Tanger, and Selena McGill for Premium, I will put their names in. Are there any others? We'll vote, two for two.
Okay, the motion passes seven to zero.
Human services advisory board, we have two vacancies. I would like to put the name of Lucy Johnson in.
That's what I was gonna.
Anyone else? Uh, you want?
Kenelin?
Kenelin, okay. And I think our requirement for the social worker is met, so.
So we have Johnson and Perez.
Mm-hmm. Any others?
I got nothing to give.
If not, two for two.
Ms. Garza?
Oh, my bad.
Thank you. Motion passes seven to zero.
Neighborhood commission, the only ones open are five and nine. We have two applicants, one for five and one for nine. I'll put the names of Estella Enricus and Cory Holland, Estella for five and Cory for nine.
How does it say need three?
We should have the.
We've got two vacancies, is what mine says, hold on.
Well, I have.
Oh, you're right.
Texas State Division.
Oh.
Oh, but there was no applicant.
Ms. Trevino?
Right.
Which slot is it that we needed, that we didn't get applications for?
I believe, I believe it was probably for the university.
Oh, the university one.
University student affairs.
So you're right, it's three, but.
No, I have two.
Yeah. So we're back to two for two, thanks for making that note. We'll have to make another round on that one.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Parking advisory board, we have one vacancy. And I have that Amanda Alexander meets that requirement, do I, my notes correct, Ms. Trevino?
I am gonna defer to Ms. Cordova, because I can't, I don't have the system out, because I have the voting system.
Oh, you got the voting thing, yeah. Yeah, I've got, it needs to, it's one of the slots, remember, we, instead of saying it has to be business or property, we made them more generic so that you could meet one of the three.
Yes, ma'am, you're correct.
And.
Ms. Cordova confirmed.
And, and Ms. Alexander does meet the criteria?
Yes.
Okay.
As a business owner or as a resident?
I don't remember which one.
I don't either, and I tried to pull it up to try my packet, but I could, the application packet, I was having a hard time pulling.
Applications.
For both.
Both?
Both.
Perfect.
So we're good?
Yes.
All right, so we will put the name of Amanda Alexander into play. And we'll vote.
Okay, the motion passes six to zero.
And now we're on to the senior citizen advisory board. We have several interested, one of them we've already put on QAB. I will put the name of Joyce Berryman in play. Anybody else, anybody, have anybody else?
Joyce was mine.
Okay. Y'all have someone else to suggest for senior citizen? No, okay, all right, then we're one-for-one.
Okay, the motion passes six to zero with one absent.
Okay. And veterans affairs advisory board. Oh, he's abstaining on this one, I guess.
Since we only have Alana Trammell and Brian Acosta.
We need three, so we're, they're both.
So we get those two there.
I thought they, I thought both those applications were pretty good.
I very much thought the same, yes, ma'am.
All right, so we'll do, we'll do those two, knowing that we still have a vacancy. Oops, gotta push button. I like the buttons.
Okay, the motion passes six to zero with one absent.
Okay, and this concludes all the voting that we need on this one, Mr. Gary?
Do you, what about arts?
Which one, the arts?
Were you gonna go back to that one?
Oh, we're gonna go back to arts, you're right, I'm sorry, you're right.
Arts wasn't on the matrix.
It wasn't on the matrix.
Okay, apologies.
Wasn't, so, we'll catch you next time.
Bring that one down.
Yes.
All right, in that case, we have concluded item 17, and we're on to item 18.
Hold discussion regarding leasing practices on student housing and provide direction to the city manager.
This was brought to us by the neighborhood commission, who provided a recommendation resolution.
Oh, really?
Uh, yeah, back in January. Um, wait a minute, did I pull the right one? I pulled the wrong one, never mind. Uh, this was in February, wasn't it, Mr. Carr?
February is when they passed it, and then they got posted, and it was really more about the leasing than it is the properties that we wanted to bring it back with a proper posting, so you could talk about it.
Okay.
But was it in the packet?
The resolution was not in the packet, unfortunately, but it was put on the message board, I believe, is that correct? Y'all put it on the message board?
I don't, I don't.
Did it get emailed to everybody, too? Did it not get emailed?
I think you're right.
Okay, so.
Well, because I asked it to be.
Oh, I ju, like, when I'm sitting down to prepare for meetings, I'm gonna look at the packet, so I don't know what you're talking about.
Well, it wasn't in the packet, is why, why we pulled it for the message board. Okay, but it's about rent by the bedroom, and so what I want to make sure that we make note of is that there's, there's four sections, there's really four points that I want to make, and stop me if I'm wrong on any of this, but we've got, we've got purpose-built student housing, which we have the information available on a slide that is our student housing CUP. Then, some apartment builders choose to build apartments mostly one bath per bedroom. Some choose to rent by the bedroom instead of renting by the entire apartment unit. And then, as I understand it, that leasing practices are different from when I was in my twenties. Is that fair to say that there's actually four components, Mr. Craig and Mr. Gary? Are there more? I'm just trying to define what's out there, and then we'll, we'll talk about them. I see the wheels turning with Mr. Carr.
Yeah, normally what I hear for that they don't like, that's repeated over and over again, is the inability to pick roommates, or how their roommates, you know, they have no idea who.
It's the leasing practices.
The leasing practices. There's actually good and bad to that. If you do a normal lease, you're probably gonna have to do. There's actually good and bad to that. If you do a normal lease, you're probably gonna have to do first month in a deposit, or maybe first month, last month in a deposit, so there's a lot of upfront money, where these are just, you start paying, but you will pay for a year. I think it's a bad thing, because there's no skin in the game, and at the end of their lease period, it's not like, well, I'm gonna get money back, so I've literally seen stuff thrown off balconies and holes, you know, so then the turn period that they have, which is very short, for, from code, when we get involved, it's like, it's terrible, but it's because they didn't take care of it. But that's what they chose. So I don't know if we even have the authority, since we're a landlord tenant kind of restricted state. City attorney would want us, if we have the ability to even do anything for a lease.
Well, where I was trying to go is, and I don't, I can't, I downloaded the resolution, I don't know where it went on this computer, um, is, what the commission said is, don't do any more rent by the bedroom.
Correct.
And I'm, what I, the point I was trying to make is, it's not the structure of the rent by the bedroom that each bedroom has bathroom, that you can do that. Or the fact that they're leasing them by the bedroom, it's the, all the other leasing practices that are an issue. And I think what they're, what they may have been thinking is that we do the conditional use permit, but that's only for the purpose-built student housing that is, and Ms. Hernandez, I'm glad to see that she's here, there's a very, um, slender definition of what we actually do conditional use permits for. And so I think that we have it to pull up on the screen, and I printed it, and I don't know what I did with it, but anyway, uh, if we could get that on the screen, it'd be great. Is, it's in the land development code. Uh, maybe, maybe not. Ms. Hernandez, could you just give us a short, I know, there it is, I know you know this one by heart.
Yep, it's really three points. Design, sorry, Amanda Hernandez, Director of Planning and Development Services, it's about the design, the market, and the use.
Right.
Marketing and the use, and when we're talking about design, it's not always just one bedroom per, one bathroom per bedroom, because there's some single-family homes that have one bedroom and bathroom combined. Um, it's the fact that you can go over three bedrooms per unit, which is typical of student housing to have four to six bedrooms in a single unit, kind of dorm style.
We don't allow more than six, right?
Oh, I would have to check the dwelling unit equivalency.
We had one that wanted ten, and we moved, and I, I believe that's when we landed on six.
We have a dwelling unit equivalency in our definitions that is not quite as familiar in my head at the moment, but if we needed to pull it up, I can grab my laptop.
But it's the, it's the leasing and marketing. That's what I was looking for.
Yes, we do have language that we require be in the leases, and that has to do with when the building is not ready.
Oh.
When they move in.
No, that's, that's something we added, but it's, that's not what I was looking for, and that's not what I asked be up here. Um, it's what we have that says it's gonna be marketed to students. That's what I'm looking for. Is that up there?
Yes, ma'am. It's letter A. Designed is the end of the first sentence there, marketed is the beginning. Designed, marketed, or used are the three words.
That's what our CUPs are for. It's not, it's not the leasing practice that we're authorizing. Okay, thank you, it is up there. I just wasn't. It's hard for me to read something with the print that small from here. So thank you, that's what we've got.
And a question, on the CUP process, that's probably the only way we could really even get into any of the leasing practices at all, right? Am I correct about that? Like, that's the only way legally we could get involved at all?
I, I'd hate to make a blanket statement. I, I think what's important is really find out what your primary interests are, and how you would target those interests through some type of regulation, and then I can, from there, I would kind of give you a, a more focused, you know, advice as to whether that would be allowable or not. And if it's not, is there an alternative way of getting to a solution? But I, I would rather first you identify issues that you're concerned with, and then, let's see if we can find a way to get there. I, but yes, there are, you know, certain things are regulated by the Texas Property Code as far as residential tendencies. It just, I don't wanna give you a blanket yes or no until I see what ideas are even being considered.
Is there something that we can, as a council, kind of adjust, uh, for the CUP's leasing terms, so we can sit there and say, instead of having a year lease, we can allow them to have six months, we can allow them to have eight-month lease with just the ability to?
Matthew, back in my day, there's a fall lease, and a spring lease, and a summer lease.
That's what I was curious about.
And right now, it's a year, so if you're gonna graduate in May and you don't need it in the summer, sorry.
See, and, and that's what I'm biggest, that's where I'm getting a lot of wordings about, is why am I stuck in this lease when I graduated in April or May?
Wait, wait, stop. Ms. Reyes, what's going on over here?
I was thinking of maybe a work session. It seems like there's a bunch of little different ideas that we have. One of mine is basically the leases, the way they're structured, but
Your, please turn on your microphone, Mr. Scott.
But it may not be allowed based on what the information that you find or you give us to read up on the laws on it.
I feel a little unprepared for this conversation.
Do y'all wanna do this as a work session?
I do.
Are you okay? Cause you had some things you still wanted to say, but.
I do, but I can bring it all up in the work session and.
I'm good with that.
Have a solid.
The legal, the legal framework of what we, what we have the ability to regulate, but yeah, I'm interested in the, uh, like, the mini, you know, the semester leases. You know, the future's gonna be very fluid. People are gonna move around, they're gonna take summer internships, they're gonna take jobs, you know, like, we have to
In a fluid city.
We, we, we want to encourage the, that kind of flexibility and, and, yeah, but, but I think, we need to find out, like, what are, what can we regulate?
There are certain things too, you know, are you getting into prohibitions, uh, such as you must allow for a six-month lease, or are you giving, say, notification, uh, notifications that have to be provided to tenants? You know, notifying them that, you know, there are consequences signing the lease and so forth, so uh, it gets tricky. We are in Texas. We have, uh, the legislative environment from 2023 was not friendly to home rural cities. Uh, and we're also in the Fifth Circuit, and they've had some cases, uh, you know, having to do with, uh, real property rights and leasing practices in the context of, uh, short-term rentals and other areas, so I just, I think we need to see what council is interested in addressing and, as a starting point, and take it from there. But be mindful that, uh, there may be some challenges in, in doing some of these things.
Are we agreed that we'd like to tackle this at a work session?
Yes.
Yes.
What do we need to do? Do we need to vote, or just, we just have everybody saying we're good with a work session?
Right, yeah, I thi, I think just the, the direction to staff, the city manager here is that being put on an agenda that's suitable, or a date that's suitable.
Okay.
Cool.
Okay, then that takes care of item eighteen, and we're on to item nineteen. Thank you, Mr. Carr, Ms. Hernandez, for hanging out with us this long.
Hold discussion regarding city council procurement cards, among other things, and set up limits based solely on amount in the awarded travel, requiring council members themselves to be responsible for their accounts and provide direction to the city manager.
Mr. Scott, I believe you put this on.
I did, and I, I waited probably about two hours to talk about it, so that's why I was glad we skipped the other one. I'm just kidding, man. Anyway, um.
My taxes till eleven thirty-two, we're still out before midnight.
No, I know, but, um, this was real basic. It basically, I, I really like the idea of the council member being responsible for their own card, and, you know, and then also.
Define what that means to you.
Responsible for their own card means nobody else has to sign for it. They're responsible for their own card. They check it out, they're responsible for it, period. They're responsible to get their receipts in, they're responsible, anything happens to that card, that's their job. The next thing, the other thing would be, um, is the amounts, the limits. I think you, you, we talk about different credit limits, I say your credit limit can't be more than your travel. Cause that's what we're using it for.
Say that again?
Your credit limit can't be more than what your travel, you have for your travel. In other words, it goes down as you use your travel.
Oh.
Yeah.
And your travel balance?
Balance, yes.
I thought you meant your allocated travel, your travel balance.
Yeah, cause that's what we're using them for anyway, and that was it. That's kind of it.
Are you saying that you don't wanna have to turn in receipts?
No, nothing of that changes. We turn in receipts.
I think what you're saying is.
Those two things.
I don't understand what you're looking at that's different from what we have in the policy.
Well, doesn't someone oversee them now?
Well, they're, they're supposed to turn in receipts.
Right, but who oversees them after we turn them in?
Ms. Trevino, I'm gonna have to ask you.
Yeah, so whenever you receive, Mr. Scott, you handed me some receipts today, we're gonna process them, we're gonna upload them to my, um, units, tell them units, the financial system, and then we're going to code them, the reason why, um, and so, so.
Okay, but also, what even caught my attention by that is, you actually made the comment to me, mayor, that you, you, I, you hope you didn't have to take, or you hope you didn't have to regret signing my card for me, or something like that.
No, it's when you don't have receipts, somebody has to sign that and approve it, and I'm the one that got stuck in that responsibility.
I was gonna take your name off that list, you don't have to worry about it anymore. Each council member is required.
Well, you're responsible for your own, but if you don't turn them in, Ms. Reyes, would you tell us the legal part of, because this is public money? Why, why receipts are required?
Just the constitution says that public funds have to be used for a public purpose, and so that's really the main thing. And so as long as it's used for a public purpose, um, Mr. Locke did also ask our auditors about, about it, to see if there was anything, and they said that, um, it's, they're gonna audit against whatever our policy is. So whatever council has in the policy is what they're gonna audit against, so it depends on, um, what the council would like to, would like to do.
I thought per laws and regulations that we needed receipts, cause I know at the university, when I got my card, it was, I'm responsible for all of this, if I don't get the receipts turned in, et cetera, then I'm responsible for that charge.
That, that is correct.
Do we do that here?
Yes, and so they would still be, each council member would still be responsible for turning in the receipt.
Okay.
Or documenting if they've lost a receipt, why. It just wouldn't require the second signature, meaning the mayor's signature.
So basically, you just say, I lost the receipt, or I didn't get one, I didn't ask for one, and I forgot to ask for one.
Right.
Like, at hotels, I've discovered a couple of them that I've stayed in recently for city travel, that they didn't autom, they weren't gonna send me that statement, but I told them I needed it, and then they did, so.
I had to track mine down.
Uber's the worst of them. You're gonna check into the receipt, right?
You're, you're not enunciating your words very clearly, and without the microphone on, nobody's gonna know what you're saying.
Okay. Uber's the worst that I've found so far, cause every time I ask them to send me a receipt, or text it to me, or email it to me, they don't.
It's not in your account somewhere?
Well, that's, yeah, I can go back to my account, just make a copy and show, but it's, they, sometimes you don't get the receipts, is what I'm saying.
So you would just be responsible, obviously, for, for still turning them into the city clerk. The city clerk would then code them and go through her process. Your policy does say that you'll be, that the council member would be responsible for reimbursement to the city for items purchased without supporting documentation. And the reason for that is, again, the constitution, because it says.
The constitution of what?
The state of Texas.
Thank you.
So it does say that, um, it has to be for a public purpose, and so.
And the receipt is the proof that it's for a public purpose, correct?
I don't think anybody's debating that we don't have to submit receipts. We're all, we're all good with receipts, right? Yes.
As a backup, our, our credit statement, our card statement shows us exactly what we're using for.
But you're supposed to have the receipt to back that up. That's what you're looking for, the receipts. Credit card statement is not a receipt.
You have a, a where, a place to go to find the receipt. It can be.
Yeah, you know what the charge was for.
Yeah, I mean, that's why we have the missing receipt form, which I'm notoriously terrible at submitting. I will admit that. Um, but you just don't, like, it's like, instead of having somebody sign off on our stuff, it's like we.
That's all it really boils down to.
Yeah.
I don't like signing off on them.
Yeah, I didn't think you did, so this is good for you.
Right.
What I have said is, please don't, please don't make me sign any more of these. That's what I've said.
Okay, I couldn't remember what.
So you just wanna take that requirement out?
Pretty much.
Can you give us a, a section and line number? Where that is? Okay, well, this is just discussion anyway. So that's it. You don't want me to sign your, I don't have a receipt anymore. Have ever denied you signing that? No. Okay, I answered that question. Um, so council, this is a question.
That's the only part that I'm not sure how that would work, cause you have to.
They would have to keep updating it.
Correct. They would have to keep updating that, and so that's the part that, just from a, I don't know how they would do that. Councilmember Scott.
That from actually is, Ms. Case would always tell me and always knew when we, where we were at. But I don't know what her workload is compared to what yours is now either, so if it's too much in that regard, we'll just keep track of ourselves.
So what you wanna know is the balance of your travel account.
Travel account.
Well, yeah, we'd wanna know that.
Yeah, I do too.
So if you know that, then you know not to use your card for more than that, so why should they change your credit limit when all you really wanna know is, what's my travel balance?
So I have left, yes.
Which we could just say, just first of every month, let everybody know what your travel balance is.
Right. I'll, I'll add to that. I would appreciate what I'm getting from finance to have the vendor on it, because, and I've sent, like, tons of emails last night, where I'm getting a chart with, like, almost no context, aside from some dates and charge amounts, and I had to figure out how to call city manager, like, how to, how to get access to my own city account. I don't know if anybody else has figured that out, but it took forever and ten years, and finance had told me that it was not possible, but it is possible. I have an account, I can go check my statements, I can export them as Excel, and then I upload my receipts to Google Drive, and I link them, and that's how I submit my stuff. But there's a lot of discrepancies between what I'm getting from finance and what is charged on my statement, like, to the tune of, like, a couple thousand dollars. So, and I, I tried to make it as clear as possible, and I was like, I think this happened, here's the statement. I'm highlighting it in green, like, does that make sense? So. My ask is, if we're to give you guys receipts and all that, and you're gonna give us, like, a running balance, just like, give me, like, the supporting information from that, right? Cause another layer of complexity is that there are some things that, um, we're supposed to be able to take from something else, right? So like, if we do office supplies, it's not supposed to come from this, it's supposed to, that's supposed to come from, like, another bucket, from my understanding.
That's the five hundred that you get, that if you put, turn in receipts, you can get reimbursed, and you don't pay taxes on it.
Right.
But most of us just say, give me the money, and we pay the taxes on it.
Right, and even just having a chart of that, because the amount of times I've asked for this information, and then, at one point, we, we, I thought we ironed this all out in finance and audit committee, and I'm still getting, like, confusing, conflicting stuff.
We do have the, it's not in the procurement card policy that we send y'all, but it is your council expenditure policy, so we can get that, and there is a chart that kinda says, this is travel, this is that, so we can, we can send that and look at that. But Mr. Locke is also online, um, if there's, if we wanna answer about, like, where finance pulls the information that y'all get. So, Mr. Locke, uh, are you, are you available to, to come on camera?
I mean, I don't need that information right now. I think it would be helpful if he saw what I'm seeing. Like, I don't wanna put him on the spot either.
Okay.
I mean, if he has information, that's fine, but, um, yeah.
And can I just add, add on to that? I would really like to see what's been charged against my travel account. Cause at one point years ago, it was posted to our council pages, and I went and looked at mine, and there were two charges to Pot Billy Subs, a store in which I had never been, never ordered anything from there, something had gotten coded incorrectly. So I don't know what's coded to my travel account. I couldn't tell you right now what my balance is, I just know that I have one.
You do have one, and so when you go to your conferences, you come back, you get reimbursement, that's the money that we, that, that's the account that we use to reimburse you.
I understand that. It's not where the money's coming from. It's that I was, it was showing I had paid for two things in a store I had never been in. I'm saying it was miscoded. It must've been somebody else, it wasn't me, but I didn't know that until I see it, and it was actually out there for the public. So I said, we need to fix this, and then it just came off and never got posted again. I would like to see what the charges are that, that go with this monthly thing. However, I, I'm fine with just a cumulative list, would be okay. However, I, I'm fine with just a cumulative list, would be okay. Are you okay with that?
No.
Oh, okay, tell, tell what, what you're.
I, I really just want.
I wanna see the detail.
Every, like, all the information, because, yeah, I, I, and I've sent this, I'm happy to, like, meet with Mr. Locke in, in real life, but I think there, like, because we have a limited amount of money, and, like, yeah, I think it's important just to make sure that there's, like, alignment with what, whatever process finance has, and what the practices we're doing, so that it can line up. Because I'm, I mean, I was sending these emails, like, at two in the morning, because I, I looked through every, e- every possibility of, like, I looked up amount numbers in different Google Drives on my phone, and it wasn't until I exported those statements that I realized, no, I'm not gonna find this charge of, like, six dollars and forty-five cents in September, because it was never on my statement. That's a made-up number. Yeah, so, yeah. And now, I look like I'm a hundred percent always tardy to the party, when I'm all, I'm all, I'm more like thirty percent late. I'm like, y'all didn't get these receipts because I don't have them.
Could I clarify something?
You gotta know what it's for first, right?
Um, could, could I clarify something with the clerk, and it's just 'cause, excuse my, me being naive here. I've never used my P-card except with, using for, like, the hotel, so I've never purchased a meal, and, so, how does that work out as far, so, if we go somewhere and we have a meal, or we use an Uber, we, uh, we're allowed to, uh, use our P-card for that, and then we send the receipts into our individuals here, and then we get reimbursed through our expense account if we use our P-card instead of using, like, our own. Well, if we're gonna drive down the road, let's just pay out our own account, not discharge the same kind of stuff.
It just gets charged for travel.
That's where it gets confusing.
Well, but, 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 but as a, actually, I have a problem just saying this. I personally don't like to use the city's money. If I'm traveling, like, when we go to DC, I'm not gonna charge them for dinner or for a cab ride. And, and we have the right to, but that just sits in my head, so let's say for some reason I did do that. At that point, that's when I bring in a statement saying, here's four dollars I spent on an Uber. Please reimburse me from my expense account that we use for travel?
Yes. I'm, I'm gonna let.
That's correct. You sound so stressed about that.
Lucia has a fabulous, um, well, I don't know, the, her, the little receipt form that she made is really cool. I don't use it because I'm a little bit of a control freak, and I need to have it on my Excel sheet, you know?
I just wanna be very careful, because it's, it is taxpayer money, and the last thing I want is for somebody to sit there and go, well, you misused it, because none of us wanna give that impression. So that's kinda where I just wanna make sure that if, at what point, you know, what, what is.
Yeah, I don't even use a card. I don't, I don't have a city card. I put it on my card, then I fill out the travel thing with the mileage, and sometimes I do per diem for, for lunch or dinner, depending on what, you know, if, if I was gone the proper period of time or whatever. And that, that's what I do in my, even if I was using a P-card. Uh, I put it on the form.
But if I decided to do that, I would use this process.
We all go out, and we're in these years, and we could all go out, and I could pay everybody's.
Are you, please turn on your microphone if you're gonna talk, Mr. Scott.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, so when, uh, if we all go out, and, you know, I could pay everybody's bill on one card, you know, and turn the receipt in.
How does that work? Because, do you need to divvy that up amongst all of us?
Yes, ma'am. It's a split, it's not helpful. Transaction. I found the P-card training somewhere random in the one drive, yeah.
Yeah.
It's just easier if we just each pay our own, right?
It'll be cleaner, it's cleaner.
And, and, and remember that, Ms. Reyes, for that one dinner in Washington DC I complained about.
Right, and I think it gets more complicated, because when we travel as a group, I'm not naming names, but some of us aren't super comfy using Ubers and Favors, and then it's like, okay, I guess I'm gonna Uber all of us, which is, I guess, good for the, uh, environment of it all. But it's also like, I'm, I'm, I'm taking that out of your account, I'm happy to use my Uber then. But I know, me and Mark, we're, we were good at splitting it, like, I did one, he did another one, but, yeah.
And, and we also do have the ability.
But you should get all that money back.
I mean, not, not all of that, I mean, like, when, when it's a group thing, then Lauren, Ms. Surly will usually pay for that, or.
There were a couple of times when Ms. Garza had to, in Washington, I forget one.
But it was at your individ, like, you were by yourself, or you were with the group?
No, it was with the group.
Yeah. I think we needed more, and like, you could only do one per account. I don't remember, I'm just saying.
It's usually when they book the, the Ubers, right, it's usually, like, it usually goes with that.
It was like, two fiscal years ago, so I'm like, not worried about it now.
We needed another car.
I think, I think it's important for us to, uh, yeah, talk about this, maybe in the finance and audit committee, I don't know.
There's times where it's convenience, right, or it's just an accessory, you've got one, three people getting an Uber, and whoever's got, we have the ability to give each other travel money too. We can share that, so if we do have, where someone has run up a couple expenses, and they're on their account. But it would show up on your statement as you're the one spending, and even though it was.
So just, just to recap, um, because I know our, we've gone through a lot of things, so just to recap, it looks like where council's at right now is, um, having the dates, uh, and, what did I write down? I'm gonna look at myself. Monthly balance to each council member, wanna make sure that there's a, the dates and vendor for each purchase, make sure that that, that's there. No second signature required for missing receipts. Um, and then, of course, there's the, the issue of P-card statements not matching from the credit card statement, so just need to look at that one off and kinda make sure that we understand what's happening there, Ms. Garza.
How is a P-card statement different from the credit card statement, when those are supposed to be the same thing? Was that the problem?
Yeah, I, I, I think sometimes it's with flights and hotels, because you know, sometimes it, that's the only thing I can think of, which is why I'm happy to meet with Mr. Locke, um, because there's, it, it's like around almost the amount of, like, the chart that Lucia sent me, but on my P-card statement, it's, that's not the final, right? So I don't know, maybe it's like pulling earlier or whatever, I don't know. But, and then there's some that are just not on my statements at all.
So we'll look at that, just to reconcile and make sure that we understand what's happening there, but does that make the gist of kind of what I've heard from everybody tonight?
That's what I've got right now.
And so then we can bring this back, um, for y'all to look at and get approved with those changes.
Okay, so have we, have we closed this one?
I do have one question, I'm so sorry, maybe I missed it, but the credit card limits, I know, what we, what I normally do for the credit cards is, I, I just put the amount, like, uh, an employee, you know, three thousand a month, or fifteen, whatever, and then when there is a, a conference, I need to, I do a credit increase, and that's when the mayor signs that form. So.
Well, you might.
That's why it was based on the limits. That's exactly why I said, based on the limits of what your balance is left at, that's your.
Okay, so just at the total.
But if she's telling us monthly what our balance is, then we will know that, and we don't need to reduce the thing on the card, because we will know, we'll know what it is.
We won't need to increase, you mean?
No, you were asking that it be decreased.
Yes.
And we won't need to do that anymore.
Right, right, well.
But she's talking about, uh, bumping up the limit when we're registering for a conference or something, we might need a higher amount for that period of.
Especially for the hotels in DC.
For that.
Again, and if I have six thousand dollars on there, she doesn't need to give me, yeah. She doesn't need to go through whatever channels, where I get stuck at the hotel, and can't use my card, it's not working, and the limit, and all this kinda stuff, which I've had happen, and use my apartment, witness.
So what, what you're.
That's why I don't use P-cards.
So to clarify, what you're saying is that, if you, if, if she has a, if, if, if you have five thousand dollars left on your, on your travel balance, and you need to increase to travel, then, if you, no, if you need an increase on what the P-card limit is, just go ahead and increase it to the five thousand or whatever you have left on your.
I think you've started every cycle, whatever it is, like, six thousand, whatever one of your cycles is a year.
Well, we've got what's in our travel budget, but then there's that maximum that's on the card, which is for everybody. There's a maximum, we just have to determine what the maximum is.
That's, that was the issue, so I wanna get rid of that.
Well, you can't get rid of the limit. You may can raise it, but you can't get rid of a credit card limit.
Raise the limit to what our traveler, that's what it says. That's why I said.
Is your microphone on? Because I'm sure I'm having trouble hearing you.
Okay, is it yours?
I'll be your mic.
Okay, thank you.
So, so basically, it's just eliminating, what I'm hearing is that you're saying, just go ahead and, and work that out with Ms. Trevino, based on what your, what your limit is, and increase, and it would not require the second signature.
Right.
To increase it. That's, that's what.
As long as we're within our allocated amount, that we can spend.
Right.
Okay.
Yes, real common sense.
Are we done?
We are.
This will come back in a, some period of time.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Give us some time to work through the changes, and then we can bring it back.
Okey-dokey. Mr. Gary, have we disposed of this properly?
Yes, Mayor, I think that takes care of it. As long as the city manager knows what she needs to do with her folks and finance, I think we're good. And city clerk as well.
I look forward to finding out monthly. Okay, uh, then that takes us on to item twenty. Ms. Trevino, if we read fast and we hurry, we can get out by ten.
Yes, the city council will convene an executive session pursuant to the following section of the Texas local, um, Texas government code A, section five five one point zero seven one, consultation with attorney, to receive legal advice regarding a proposed cost-sharing agreement for construction of a wastewater treatment plant. B, section five five one point zero seven one, consultation with attorney to receive legal advice regarding officer-involved shooting on April eleven, twenty twenty-four.
And, um, as we do for every regular meeting, we have the same items on our executive session for our work session. We generally get the, uh, the conversation done during the work session, as we did today. So we do not need this, do, we do not need to go into executive session again this evening. On to item, the next item.
Consider action by motion or provide direction to staff regarding the following executive session items held during the work session and/or regular meeting, just as stated above.
Uh, on item A, we did provide direction to staff, and on B, we did receive legal advice. So that concludes, um, executive session, and we are now to question and answer session with press and public related to items on this agenda. And we did have someone signed up. It was, um, I believe it was Ms. Dixon. Is anybody online?
Yes, I'm gonna double-check something real quick.
They may just still be online from earlier.
We do have, we do have Mr. Baker online.
Okay, but it does, the person who signed up online?
Oh, yeah, we do not have Ms. Dixon on there.
I do not, okay, then, um.
Let me move him over.
Is there anyone else?
That's it.
Okay, so Mr. Baker? Has he accepted the invitation to be moved back over to active? Okay, then, Mr. Baker?
I'm trying to move him. He accepted it, but it's still.
Recently?
Yes.
Okay. I'm, I'm not seeing him over, but he's got his hand up, so maybe something isn't happening properly with the software that we're using. Well, that was weird. Showed Lloyd Moore you're with a hand up, but I think it was screen. There's Mr. Baker, and it looks like he has unmuted.
I can't see you all. Okay, here we go, here we go. I had to relaunch everything. All right, um, I'm gonna ask some questions quickly, because three minutes is very much time. Uh, given that you had the executive session agenda item, I'd like to ask a question. Given our country's, uh, and states' and cities' history of immoral laws that have required lawsuits to correct them, have any of you all considered foregoing the executive privilege in what you discussed in executive session about Malachi's case, and who decides to direct the city manager to have the chief meet the demands of the community? Also, I've noticed you struggle to find a student representative for the neighborhood commission. What has your outreach been? Have you all considered to activate the subcommittee on student housing and invite the tenants advocacy group as part of that to do that before bringing it forward as a work session, so that you could have a more, a more, um, robust conversation on that? And I believe, uh, given that you all are still here and in session, you could actually move to reconsider that item and appoint that committee, uh, to the, um, subcommittee, or sorry, the subcommittee on student housing. Um, also, for boards and commissions, um, I've mentioned this before, uh, there is a concern in the community that we've been talking through at the San Marcos Civics Club, which meets the fourth Monday of every month, um, to standardize access to the boards and committees' information, namely, that, um, when it's listed through the website, which I believe is the city clerk's job, that there be consistency in terms of identifying when and where those, uh, meetings occur. Um, also, to clarify information provided to the community about who their neighborhood commissioners are. When we did our open records request, the neighborhood commission information provided to us did not include what sectors and a map that aligned to those sectors. Um, I'm available to clarify any of those questions, and I look forward to your response. And again, just to remind you, city council members, you all can reply individually. Your lawyer is designed to protect the city's assets, not to pursue justice. Um, so it is up to you to decide how you would like to answer my first question, again, about foregoing the executive privilege. If you have asked about that in executive session, you are more than welcome to state that you have asked that in executive session, um, and even identify the colleagues that have chosen not to move forward with that. Um, so, again, the ball is in y'all's court with a lot of these things. I know many of you are struggling to understand what your rights are, and I think unfortunately, part of that has been the legal advice that you've received from Mr. Aguirre, as well as the legal advice that you've been receiving from Stan Standridge. So again, are any of you willing to direct the city manager to have the chief meet the demands of the community?
I'm not sure what the first one is. Uh, I believe Mr. Baker said something about the student housing committee. That committee has not met in quite some time. I believe it was.
Right, my question there was if we would like to reactivate that committee, and then appoint people to it this evening while it is adjourned.
And your time is up.
You have to clarify a question.
Mr. Baker? I'm gonna hit the mute. Um, I don't, that, two of the three people who were on that committee are no longer on city council.
Wait.
Of the student housing committee.
I thought he meant, like, the student, the group of this.
Oh, and to meet with tag, is what he wanted. But we, we don't currently have a committee, was my point.
That is actually not what I said. I asked that you re-appoint the committee this evening, as you have an agenda item that could suffice the necessary requirements to do that. I know those people aren't on there, because I looked it up.
Mr. Baker, I think that's pretty much right. Mr. Baker, I'm going to hit the mute.
Uh, I'll answer one of them. Uh, my understanding of the question about executive session, I've always been of the mindset that I'm uncomfortable with executive session. I get with, like, contracts and stuff. Um, but if it were up to me, we'd have conversations about, uh, police violence in public. But I don't move by myself, I move with the body, so, uh, I, I don't think we've talked about that since you've been off council max, and I couldn't even remember the details of the first time we discussed that. But, yeah. I don't know if I answered your question, but.
I would need a refresher, and I don't, I'm not saying necessarily today, on exactly what all that means to.
Well, there's a couple of things. One is, you're not all, all invited, all obligated one by one to answer any question you're asked.
Right.
Uh, it's kinda like Citizen Comment, you can provide factual information, you can direct things to staff to follow up. Or if you're not prepared to answer a question that's a major policy type of question, you're, you're not on the spot to, you're not gonna go to Q and A jail under our ordinance, so it's, uh, it's a lot to, for some to put, be put on the spot. It's, it's up to the council members how they wanna answer.
Yeah, my point is, I couldn't answer it tonight, anyway.
Oh, I think another part of the question was, uh, something about, like, do we, are we gonna give, like, direction to the chief to do something, or something like that? Uh, we did get a good briefing on, like, the, like, the legal parameters of releasing the video. I understand different perspectives as why not to, but again, if it was me, if, if I wasn't moving with the body, my stances, But again, if it was me, if, if I wasn't moving with the body, my stances, that I just don't see a reason why it shouldn't be, um, body camera footage shouldn't be open to the public, but that's my personal opinion. Um, and I respect, everybody has different perspectives. I don't understand them, uh, but I, I get. Clearly, not everybody thinks the way that I do.
I'm not, I'm, I'm, I'm looking at one about the neighborhood commission. I don't, I'm not familiar with the open records request that he requested, but I would hope that anytime we've got a list of our neighborhood commissioners, as, that's their role, that we would have their district by their name. I don't know if we do that in the minutes. Maybe we do, maybe we don't. If we don't, might not be a good, might be a good idea if we did. I don't know. There are minutes.
Well, I don't know about the minutes, but on the website, we do have a member roster, and it does have the different sectors.
Right, on, on the, right, on the website it does. But depending on what he's asked for, I mean, if, if, if it's not on the minutes, then we wouldn't necessarily know it. I don't think you should have to go to the website to find it. So, um, and, and so I don't know about the, I don't know what he was asking for. We'd have to look at that. Um, I don't understand, I don't, I'm not sure what the standardized board and commission information about consistency on meetings. Um, I'm not sure what that question was. Do you know?
I believe he wants to know the locations on where they're going to meet and when, like, is it like the first Wednesday of each month, or, you know?
And we've talked about putting that out there, so that people applying will know.
Absolutely, yes.
So is that maybe something that we're going to get with, um, some updates?
Mm-hmm, it's in the works.
It's in the works, okay. That will help when people are applying. Anything, anybody else?
Uh, if, if Mr. Baker wants to email me the questions, because honestly, I, I didn't. I, I have a bad working memory. I'm very tired. Um-
Well, the audio wasn't that great either.
I'm happy to answer what I can via email.
I'd, I'd like for him to just email them to me, so I know where they are, and then we'll see what, what we might be able to figure out. Questions from anyone else? You have to talk into the microphone. You got three minutes. You, you ask questions. There's not a back and forth. You may ask your questions, and we'll have to see if it's something we can answer that, that's factual. We, we can do that. If it's something the staff needs to look up, then we'll need your email address, and we'll respond to you by email. This is not a time to ask each one of us a question about something that's not on the agenda.
So if I ask y'all-
We need your name first, please.
Yancy Arevalo.
Thank you.
So if I ask y'all, after hearing what you heard today from everyone who came up and spoke, how do y'all feel about the ceasefire resolution?
It is not on our agenda. No, ma'am. That's not fair to the public to be-
No, I get it. I get it. You need to explain it to me. Well, it's not fair to the public to not even entertain the conversation, but- Yeah, we weren't given opportunity to even entertain this, so, um, I hope that y'all were moved today from what you heard, and that you do what's right for this community and for the international community and for Palestinians.
Um-
Just a reminder, it's a question.
Do you have a question?
Okay. No, not really. I mean, like I said, we weren't really given an option to even discuss this, so that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Anyone else? If not, this concludes our meeting this evening. I'll take a motion to adjourn. Turn your microphone on.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Gleason, seconded by-
Second.
Mr. Mendoza. Ms. Trevino will vote.
Yes. Mr. Paul Thomas. Motion, Petzis seven to zero.
And we are adjourned at 10:08.
I feel like it's too much of a point now.